Okay, we're recording, we have video council, it is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, July 15th, 2005. I will call this regular city council meeting to order, coming to you live, feel like an MC, from the world famous Mootwa Club in the North End. So gotta thank a few people, first of all, thank you, Chris. I take it for granted when I think it would be kind of neat to take the city council show on the road, we had a great meeting here last night, and but I take it for granted that Chris has to work really hard to get all of the video and audio up and working, as does Nicholas to load everything in the car, get it down here, to Rick, the mayor of North Berry, and of the Mootwa Club, thank you Bernie, thank you very much for your hospitality, and to all of the members of the Mootwa Club, thank you for allowing us to be here. So council, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I have an issue.
Yes?
I have something I'd like to bring up about how we do one another and on the decisions.
Okay.
Can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, we'll try to speak up. Counsel during is absent, if there's no objection from council, we can address that at a later meeting, if that's okay?
Sure.
Because we have a, we kind of do have a packed agenda, and as I wrote this afternoon, item 8E is a, you know, item that could change.
As long as we adjust, you know, maybe at the next.
Yep, as long as four members of the council have no objection to placing that on the agenda, that's impactful. Okay, so any other adjustments, Mr. Manager?
None for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Under visitors and communications, anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Yes, Joellen Mulvaney?
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can't hear, I see your hand up, Joellen, but you don't have video and I can't hear you. I apologize.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can we get a test, there's video.
Okay, can you hear us, Joellen?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Okay, I don't have any, yeah, just one second, give me a thumbs up if you can hear us, if you can hear me, okay, oh, thumbs down, you can't.
Hold on, give me one second.
Yep, give me one second. Okay, you're logged on to Zoom and you can hear us.
Can you hear her? Can you hear anybody?
There we go, oh, there we go, we got you now.
Can you hear anyone?
Can you, can you hear us yet, Joellen?
It's not me, no.
And I can't hear you, I apologize.
I'm gonna go out and in, hold on.
Let, give us 30 seconds to just get this sorted out if we can, I apologize.
I can tell you, I can't see you, okay.
Oh.
The audio from Zoom is not going to speak. And I don't have a microphone. Can you turn your computer up?
I have to change the speaker to your laptop.
Speaker to laptop, okay. Speaker should be on the owl.
Owl, yeah.
Speaker to owl, okay. Let's try that.
Anything yet, if you hear us at all, give us a thumbs up.
Sandra, can you hear us? Sandra, can you try speaking?
Okay, so you can hear us.
Yes.
Sandra, can you unmute yourself and try, try speaking?
You're still muted, Sandra.
Nicholas, can you hear me?
Oh, there's Brian, yep, we heard Brian, it's coming through.
Yep, I can hear you and see you.
All right, can you hear me now? Sandra's speaking, can you hear me?
We're almost there, we're close.
Hey Brian, can you try again? Yeah, anyone?
Hello now, can you hear me?
That's good.
Okay.
Can you, can you hear me as well?
We can hear you now.
All right, we're set, we're sorted.
Okay, Joellen, are you, are you back somewhere, you had your hand up first?
She's, she's coming into the, she's coming into, no, she's locked out. There we go.
Okay, Joellen, we should be all set.
Can you hear me now?
I can, I'm sorry, yeah, I can.
Okay, sorry about that. I just had a couple of questions, because I'm a little curious. So, between the deadline of the Berry Area Development Corporation and the city, and when Mr. McKenzie came to the council to explain that there was a continuance of it?
An extension, yes.
Because I wondered if there was something in their contract originally that said, if the deadline isn't met, blah, 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 but the city said there was nothing in writing about that, there was no contract, so I couldn't see that. So here's my question, what kind of process was used in between the deadline for them and when Mr. McKenzie came to tell you that it was continued?
It was extended, we did receive a copy of the executed contract extension, so we have that on file.
I was not able to see it, I'll come down and take a look. The other question then is, if indeed there was an extension, then why wasn't it brought back to city council? Because there wasn't even a notice that he was gonna be there to talk about it, so if he wanted to check in, they couldn't even have done that. So I'm wondering, you know, like, what was the deal with that, how come it didn't come back to council?
I can address it, yeah, so the contract, the contracts and the options are between BADC and the owners of 143 North Main Street, the city's not a party to the contracts that they have, they notified us of the extension, and the city's pledge was not time limited, the city's pledge is contingent on BADC executing a purchase option, which was extended, so the pledge follows through with that extension, and the reason we don't have a public record of it is because it's not a public record of the city, it is a contract between BADC and the owners of 143 North Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Sandra, hi, how are you?
Yes, hi, I have just a couple or three questions, just kind of trying to get an update on some things. Could we get an update on the fire hydrant issues that were addressed or mentioned back, I think last year, we still have at least one in the neighborhood that has a do not use kind of thing on it, just want to bet, update of that. And also, can we get an update on the removal or moving of the fence and vegetation at the property at 163 Berlin Street? It was, I was informed, the owners were sent an email in regard to doing that, and in the paving planning map that was presented last.
Okay, the paving actually is on the agenda?
Yeah, but this is a question about what is not on that map. So I'm just curious if the, the spot on Prospect, where the, where the planning ends is at Westwood Parkway, and I'm just wondering about the spot on Prospect closer to Bailey Street and the one on Arioli Street, that's, that's been that way since winter. So those are my three, I was looking for updates on, the vegetation to the east side of the Westwood Parkway intersection, I was gonna give kudos to the city for taking care of that, but I have been informed since that again, a citizen resident in Countryway went down and took care of that on his own. That needs to be an ongoing maintenance scheduled item, same as snow plowing, as far as we're concerned, so just those three items. And just to get the vegetation on the east side of that intersection, plus the fence and vegetation on the west side of the intersection that is still an ongoing problem. So just an update for those things if we can.
I can address those, Mr. Mayor, I don't have the numbers on the hydrants, but they have, the water department has been working throughout the city, they're, during construction season, they're doing fewer of them than they were during the winter and spring, but they are, they're replacing them as they can, they're also doing inspections, so as they inspect, some, some may come offline, as others come online, so I don't have the specific numbers, I'm happy to bring that to the city council.
But so.
Update next, next meeting.
Okay.
But I do want to assure everyone that the, you know, the fire department has mapped every hydrant that is out of service, they, they have plans for reaching any corner of the city that they need to during an emergency, so even though it may be concerning to see if fire hydrant are out of service, the fire department is aware of them, they have, they have plans to address any, any emergency situations that would.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure it hadn't been canceled or forgotten.
No, we haven't forgotten it, we couldn't.
Okay.
Vegetation, I, I, again, I'll check with Public Works on the details, I don't have them today with me, but that's, I know that we're planning to do the work that was committed to on that intersection when the paving happened, so that's, that may be tied in with that is, is my supposition. And then as for the paving plan, the paving plan is, the map that was provided in the packet is for the broader paving plan of whole streets that are paved, we don't, we don't show patches or, you know, little strips that need repair, that is for long stretches of, of street paving, that's contracted out, so you wouldn't have seen the small patches that you mentioned on that map.
So, so do we have any idea when those patches will be made?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't have a timeframe on, on those, I know that during, during the construction season, we're, we're focused on our big infrastructure projects, so those projects will probably be handled either when the main contractor is doing paving, or as we get earlier into the fall, but right now, our, our public work staff is working on big infrastructure projects across the city and preparation for the, the major paving, getting those roads ready for, for the, you know, for the contractors to come and take care of them.
Okay, we may just want to keep an eye.
You asked a specific question, Sandra, so I'll make sure that Nicholas, I'm sure he has your contact information, he can get you an answer to that question, a specific answer.
Okay, well, the one on Arioli Avenue is just a little getting deeper all the time. And, and, yeah, and the update on the fence and vegetation at 163 Berlin Street, did you?
Yeah, that was the second update I gave, that I don't have, my, my supposition without talking, having talked to Brian before, is that they're probably tying a lot of this work to the intersection work that'll be happening up there.
Okay, well, any updates I can get, I would appreciate.
Yep, I'll follow up with you, Sandra.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else, I'm sorry, anyone else under visitors and communications? Yes, Bern Rose?
Hi, I'm Bern Rose, I just wanted to say thank you to people at the pool for extending the hours, I hope that all the people that aren't here are at the pool tonight, being cool until eight o'clock, that's really great that you're doing these flexible things and that the lifeguards are willing to help out, this really makes a big difference to the community, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else wishing to address the council under visitors and communications, so I'll move on to the consent agenda, council will be asking for your approval of the minutes of the meeting of 7:125, I believe the clerk QQ has some licenses and permits on the consent agenda, and those are?
All right, I have fireworks, Berry Partnership will be doing the firework display July 26, an event held by Turning Point, a central Vermont, it's a candlelight visual at City Hall Park, which will be August 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and catering, we have the quarry who would like to hold a catering event at Devo Square for the Heritage Festival, and Cornerstone, who always does their beer tent on Washington Street.
Thank you very much, and council will also be asking you to approve loan agreement RFI-357-1.1, in conjunction with that, you have, you did receive a briefing in your packet on that, we'll be passing resolution 2025-12, that is related to that loan agreement, we'll be amending the policy passed at our last council meeting for notice of trespass on city property, we will be setting the clerk compensation, again, you did receive the memo on that, and we will be authorizing the manager to execute contracts, and I believe you have one.
We have one, yeah, there's a contract with East View Incorporated, which is, it's for grant writing services related to CDBGDR projects, Jim Lebinsky will be helping us craft our applications for, for that, that grant.
And that information is also in your packet, so a motion would be in order?
So moved.
Is there a second please?
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you very much, motion carries, council under 4A will be asking you to approve the city warrants, approve the week of 7/16/25, and ratify the week of 7/9/25, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Is there a second please? Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Noted, your abstention is noted, motion carries, this city clerk, you're up, you can just steal the mic right away, so just, just steal it, he can steal it back.
Just a brief notice about the new tax bills, they were mailed out Wednesday, July 9th, you should be receiving them very soon, if you have not yet already received one. The due date for the first quarter is Friday, August 15th, this is a holiday for the state of Vermont, but the city hall is still open from 7:30 to 4:30 PM. Our office accepts checks and cash, however, there is the option to pay online, if you go to our website and on the cover page, there is the dollar sign icon, you just click on that and it will lead you through the steps to pay online. However, please have your tax bill on hand, because you will need to provide your parcel number and the exact amount, too. If you have any questions at all in regards to your tax bill, please contact City Hall. There is a fee for credit cards, if you use your routing number and your account number, it's a flat fee of $2.75. If you use an actual credit card or debit card, it's a 3% charge.
Thank you. Any other questions for the city clerk? Yes, sir, if you wouldn't mind, would you mind coming up to the seat right here? Otherwise, it doesn't pick you up.
Peter Kelman, if you're on auto pay for the past.
You continue, you continue to remain on auto pay until you ask to be removed from auto pay.
Good.
Thank you.
And you have to ask, and you have to put it in writing to be removed.
Okay, council, I'm sorry, any other questions for the court? Okay, I'll call the liquor and cannabis control board to order, maybe you have some licenses for us to approve?
I do, I have two, actually, one is actually still in the works, the last minute, I did get the police chief's approval, however, he, it's under contingency that he, or I should say, that the Berry Social Club does receive all their paperwork from the Department of Liquor and Lottery. The second one is Rossini, or as we know as AR Market, they're going up for their renewal of their class two liquor license.
Motion would be in order?
To move.
Thank you, and a second please? Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Brief question.
Yes, of course.
Do we need to include in the motion that we approved contingent on the police chief's final approval? Or should we just?
Well, his wording was contingent on them receiving all their paperwork from the Department of Liquor and Lottery.
Yeah, and that was.
And Mead is just pushing a button when I get back to the office after you all approve it.
I'm more just asking a wording question if the motion needs to include that contingency or not.
Well, that's the way it was presented, and then I asked for the motion, and the motion was as presented, so I think we're right.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? One other item, council under liquor cannabis control boards, we run into this every year as we approach Heritage Festival, I don't think we have another meeting until after Heritage Festival, that is correct?
Correct.
Okay, so every year, we run into a few stragglers, a few vendors who haven't gotten their licenses in, and I end up having to call a special meeting of the liquor and cannabis control board, simply to accommodate those vendors and really accommodate our citizens and accommodate the Heritage Festival. Any objection if we do that by voice vote and then ratify, in other words, we send an email around for folks who have been previously licensed in the city? Any objection, and then we ratify at the next meeting? Or I can call a special meeting?
No, I think as long as they've been prior licensed, I think that's.
There's nothing in the queue, everybody within the city of Berry has followed through with their licensing.
Really?
Yes.
So there's not gonna be any stragglers this year?
Unless it's a brand new entity.
Okay, all right, well, if it's a new entity, we couldn't do it by.
Right.
Roll vote anyway, so, okay, well, stay tuned, hopefully we don't have to, but if we do, we will. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, a couple updates for the council, number one, we're doing some more overnight line striping tonight, crews will be on Prospect, North Main, South Main, and time permitting, Summer Street, so we just ask residents to please drive through the area with care, obey all the signage on the roads, and follow any instructions you might get from our crews out on, working on the roads. I mentioned this last night at the forum, but repeating tonight, that we have our first round of closings, buyout closings related to the 2023 flood, scheduled, the first two are on August 1, and we have four on August 11, so we have six total properties that are, that have reached the finish line, and as, you know, we're, we're just about the two-year mark, which is, seems a long time ago that we were telling people that it's a two-year process, and here we are with our first set of buyouts coming to the, across the finish line. So we expect more, they've been, they've been coming in sort of in batches, so we expect more here in the coming weeks, and having to make a couple of trips up to Burlington to, to execute these closings. We were, I also mentioned last night that we were notified by Vermont Emergency Management about the status of our three big mitigation projects that were submitted under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, the two projects that were rated highest by BEM, which are the Berlin Street Bridge removal and Willie Street Bridge, were submitted to HMGP as high priority alternates, and then the Harrington Avenue debris rack and floodplain restoration was submitted as a medium priority alternate. So what that means is there, there's no funding for them at the moment, they would become funded if additional HMGP funds become available, or if there's a subsequent round of HMGP funding. We're also exploring right now the option of flipping these projects into CDBGDR applications, but mitigation, part of that funding is, is gonna be much more competitive. And then finally, on a sad note, you may have read that Assistant City Manager Don Monahan is leaving the city, she's leaving us to, to be closer to her family, so really, bittersweet moment, as we bid farewell to, you know, really universally well-liked and respected colleague, she, she did projects big and small for the city, she, you know, as, you may have read in the, in the story about her, she's part of the reason, you know, her and Carol's stewardship are really the reason that we didn't have to borrow a dime to do our flood recovery from the 2023 flood, so that's really a testament to, to the financial management of our finance department. So, sad to lose Dawn, of course, support her in her endeavors of wanting to be closer to family, but big loss for the city, and we are, we have advertised, posted for a finance director position, and interviews started this weekend, so we hope to be able to fill the position, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dawn. It was nice to serve with someone who speaks the language, so her and I had a lot of great conversations, and we certainly wish you well, and thank you very much for your service. So council, we will, I'm sorry, any questions for the city manager? Counsel, no? All right, we'll move on to item 8A on the agenda, thank you, counsel, for letting me keep this agenda moving along, we've got a lot to do under 8E, but we are at 8A, this is volunteer appointments, we're speaking with Jamie Bauer, Jamie, how are you? Jamie is looking to, or has applied for a seat on the Transportation and Public Works Committee, Jamie currently serves on our DRB. Jamie, it's all yours.
Hi there, yes, thank you, a couple of things, one has come to my attention that there's been issues with quorum, needing someone to take minutes and notes, I'm interested in traffic calming and pedestrian safety, my expertise is in housing, but also in urban planning in general and smart growth, and I am willing to make sure we have quorum and willing to, to take the minutes.
Thank you. Always ask my softball question, Jamie, which is simply, you know, you understand, you've attended meetings of the committee, you understand the committee, you understand the time constraints, and you're prepared to meet those.
Yes.
I'm sure you were. Any other questions, council?
Not a, that question, we're more of a comment, just saying that Jamie has been extremely active in her neighborhood and having conversations about traffic calming and bringing together neighbors for those conversations, so I think she's a good fit for this committee.
Fantastic, and in real life, you worked for the Vermont Housing Finance Agency, you're.
No, I work for the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay, I thought you were on part of the underwriting team for the Seminary Street project, wrong department.
Wrong department, I will actually be reaching out to Nicholas fairly soon for a land break project that we're going to be working on, getting some subcommittees together.
Fantastic, well, thank you, council, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Thank you, it's moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Welcome aboard again. Thank you very much. Council, next we'll be speaking with Sean Warner.
Sean is online.
Sean, how are you?
Dude, how are you?
Very good, Sean is seeking to be appointed the Berry City Representative. Sean is seeking to be appointed the Berry City Representative on the C B Fiber Board. Sean, floor is yours.
Oh, well, I have over twenty-five years' experience in fiber and cable and I thought I would be a good voice for Berry on this board.
Fantastic. And again, my softball question, you understand the requirements, time requirements relative to the service on the board and you're prepared to, prepared to meet those on behalf of the city?
Well, definitely.
Thank you very much. Counsel, so I'm going to ask for a twofer. If you could please, someone could make a motion to appoint Sean to the C B Fiber Board as a city representative and also approve Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirteen that supports the appointment. That would be great. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, welcome aboard, Sean. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'm sorry, someone say something? No, I'm hearing, oh, clearing your throat. Counsel, we're at item eight C on the agenda. This is our paving plan update.
Thank you, Mayor. And give me one second here, I'm going to share my screen. So that people have a visual. And I know Public Works Director Baker is joining us to answer any questions that I cannot answer. But yeah, we, we placed this item.
So everyone in the audience can read that? No, I'm. You can't read it. We'll run down the streets.
Color is good on this map. So this was just, the purpose of the update tonight is to share with counsel that after a lot of evaluation with Brian, with, with T J from the Public Works Department, we are planning to use the additional funding that was added to the paving budget by the council and approved by the voters to pave Quarry Street from Main Street all the way to the town line. And we, we, we came to that decision and recommendation after a lot of review. We evaluated many, there's, there's many streets that were worthy of paving. Quarry Street in our mind stood out due to its poor condition and due to the fact that it required the less ancillary work to get it ready for, for paving. There's less utilities, water sewer work that's needed there at a time when our crews will be working really hard to get other really big stretches of road ready for paving. So we considered many options. I almost hesitate to say them because everyone's going to want theirs paved. But for transparency, we looked at Summer Street, we looked at Elm Street. We really are trying to focus on high transit areas of the city so that people who move around our downtown, core downtown and connecting streets will feel the benefits of our paving program. So we looked at those, we looked at Granite Street as well. We looked at Camp Street and we decided, because next year's, as you can, I'll explain a little bit when you look at the map, we've really done really well by clustering our paving projects. So that saves us on mobilization costs. So we're getting more paving done for the money that we're spending. So we looked at the bottom part of Camp Street, but we decided since next year we're, we're going to be on the Nelson Woodland Avenue side of the city. We would, we would try to add camp to that year's plan. That way we save on mobilization there as well. So, so really tonight, just wanted to share with you about Quarry Street. Here, you're, you know, you sort of get a thumbs up on that. And also took the opportunity to create this map to show the public that I know our, our streets are, were in rough condition this winter. But if you look at this, we have made a lot of progress. Brian's spent a lot of time with his team, making sure that our paving program is keeping up. You can see the red paving that was the twenty twenty-three paving program. We, we got some good stretches done on, I think those look like mostly Ward Two and, and River Street area as well. In twenty-four, we did basically all of Brook and Merchant Street. So that was, that was a nice long haul. We also ended up doing some, we switched gears a little bit and did some paving on Main Street, which had become so unwalkable with the gullies that formed and frankly had become sort of water hazards for a lot of the businesses downtown. We also paved Merchants Row, which was done this year, was part of the twenty twenty-four paving plan. Again, because it's an area of high transit for our residents and it's something that they would have seen an immediate benefit for. The state came in to do some paving as well. As you can see, that giant stretch of Route sixty-two, which is in the city lines, was, was redone. The state also very, were very grateful that they repaved huge sections of North Main Street after the twenty twenty-three flood. So that's reflected on this map as well. The twenty twenty-five plan is shown here where we are looking at Berlin Street, Allen Street and Prospect Street. Also some, some areas that have, you know, desperately needed it. And if, if, you know, we get your, your consensus tonight, we would add Quarry Street to that. And then just for, you know, so you, so you understand our planning, we're looking to shift to the south side of the city for the twenty twenty-six plan to also get to pretty long stretches of, of street that have, that are in rough shape and, and also adding Camp Street, which is a highly traveled section as well. So that's really the update tonight, show you the progress, show you our plans for the additional funding. And Brian, I'll turn it over. Is there anything, Brian, you would add or anything I've missed or misspoken on, any, any other context?
No, you, you've covered it pretty well.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Yes, Counsel Spalding.
Thank you. My question is regarding the small section of Prospect Street that's not being paved. Has that been paved recently? Why is that not being included? Between Coolidge Street and Berlin Street?
Brian, can you address that?
Yeah, if, if you actually drive that section, that section of the road is not, I don't, is not in bad shape. There's definitely a seam in the road just above Jake Street and that's where it really turns bad. So that's why we're ending it right there. I know there was a sewer project in two thousand nine that paved the upper part of Prospect. So I'm assuming maybe that's where the paving came down to during there. So that's why we chose to limit it to that section. Was if there's a, there's a definite change in the road conditions at that point.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is the stretch between, this is for next year, but the stretch between, that looks like Tremont and Veder on Camp Street next year, is not included?
Yeah, that, that was preliminary. Counsel Spalding, I can address and Brian can, can fill in if I misspeak. But we are, these are preliminary looks at those, that that section is less, less bad than the lower section of camp. I think that our goal would be to do as much of it as we can. It would depend on the pricing we get next year, how far we can go up. I think our goal would be to go as far up as we can. But if we had to pick a part of Camp Street to do, it would be that lower section that's in a little bit rougher shape at the moment. But we will certainly, you know, if we're, if we get good prices again, which I hope we do. I think this, you know, talk about clustering our projects, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty good right there for any vendor who wants to come to Berry City, they won't have to move much. So we're optimistic that we'll get another good round of pricing and be able to do a little bit more than, than we're even planning at the moment.
Thank you. And my last question is the green for state paving, is that, that's paving that's actually happened?
That, that is paving that happened, yeah. So that is the Route sixty-two that they did. I believe that, was that last year? I, I think that was done last year. So that's the belt line coming all the way in. And then twenty, the, the section of North Main was in twenty twenty-three immediately after the, the flood. So they, they repaved, that whole section had washed away. I mean, all of it, it was down to basically dirt. And so the state, I believe, used Federal Highway Administration funding to come in and repave all of that for Berry City.
Thank you. My last, it's not a, it's a request, I guess. If you could update this map, I really appreciate the map. If you could update it to indicate which are state highways that we would not be responsible for paving, so people can understand why we're not paving probably the most traveled road.
Yes.
Because I'm sure people are saying, well, why aren't you doing this road? Because that's the worst and that's, those are state roads.
I think that's, that's a great suggestion. We're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Counsel, Ruth here?
Do we have any idea if Camp Street, where Berry City goes into Berry Town, is going to be reopened? I know it's probably, you know, an answer for Berry Town, counsel, but do we have any kind of inclination or clue if that's going to be reopened next year while we pave?
Counselor, I'm not sure. I, I, I'm happy to talk to Chris about it. I know that it's a part of their, oh, he may have given an update at the A D C, right?
It won't be paved until next year. It won't be reconstructed.
Reopened?
They're, they're, they're just grinding through several processes.
Yeah. That's a very, well, travel.
They're, they're ready. What Chris said was, even if they got the approval now, it would be too late.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So what Mr. McKenzie said, for those who are online, is that that section of road in Berry Town, even though obviously it's not our jurisdiction, the update that their city manager gave at Rotary, I believe, at B A D C, was that that roadway would not be repaired and reopened until next year at the earliest. So we feel their pain.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Okay, that's okay. Um, sort of two, two questions. One, a request, I think it might be nice to see the paving plan year to year in terms of, I don't know what the best unit of measurement here is, feet paved? It might be necessary to show in numbers that we are actually making increases. I think we can see it on this map, that there actually has been increase year to year in the amount we're able to pave, but it might be fun to see those numbers. And second, I wanted to follow up something briefly, Mayor, that you mentioned last night and it builds on Counselor Spalding's question, which is the state highways, which the state is responsible for paving, Main Street and the others, that's been bumped now to twenty thirty?
Correct. Yes, it is. So obviously the state has their own revenue pressure. And, you know, essentially, I mean, long story short, when electric vehicles started becoming popular, the state didn't replace that. The legislature didn't replace that with another source of revenue. Generally speaking, state transportation funds come from taxes collected on petroleum-based fuels. So with the cost of hot mix going up, I don't know if you follow what's going on at B Trans, but, you know, they were experiencing severe, severe budget constraints. So manager and I, Joe Flynn, the administration, they are wonderful. The city of Berry, we've got to focus sometimes on the positive. After the two thousand twenty-three flood, when the, when Route three oh two in the north end was just decimated, people couldn't even, couldn't even leave the north end without damaging their vehicles. The governor and Joe Flynn came to the rescue on one phone call from us. They came and they paved a significant section of Route three oh two. Since then, how often do we bug Joe? Probably too often for him. But we talked to Secretary Flynn frequently. We put, you know, again, you lobby, you try to lobby effectively, but you try to lobby to the point of not being a jerk about it. But he knows we're here. We had that conversation with Secretary Flynn and he's sympathetic to the conversation. And I suspect wherever the administration can give the city of Berry some leeway, they may. But, you know, like I said, it's not good news. And, and what we consistently say, and last communication was the manager sending the secretary a picture of the exposed cobblestones outside City Hall and saying, Mr. Secretary, this is not going to last until twenty thirty. So if, if we wanted to pave it, I'm, I'm sure Joe would be absolutely thrilled. It would easily eat up, paving a small section would easily eat up our budget for the entire year. And, you know, but I think, I, I feel better about the path we're on. We, we're not on a good path, you know, and I've said this in public meetings before. Mr. McKenzie, you were here. We reduced the paving budget, and this is years ago. I left office the first time in two thousand eighteen. And we reduced the paving budget simply to level fund the tax rate and to ease the increase in the tax rate. And in retrospect, that was a horrible decision. It, it really was, it was gutless on my part. And I regretted it and I'm happy to, I was happy to be able to correct it this year when, and happy that the council supported me when we increased that paving fund by around thirty-three percent.
Hundred thirty thousand.
And put a hundred and thirty thousand more back into it and got it up to that six hundred thousand dollar level. And I can tell you and give you a little fair warning, counsel, I'll be looking to increase that. We need to be at the seven hundred thousand dollar level or, or we're going to lose ground. So, you know, I, I wish I had better news and obviously that results in a tax increase. But we're playing a little bit of catch-up with the roads. I had hoped that between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-four, an earlier council or administration might have, you know, pumped that up, but they had the same pressure that I felt in two thousand seventeen. Yes. Yep, you, you just need to come over here, Bert, you know that.
It's an engineering question. We live on Allen Street, so I have a chance to observe that. And I drive up and down Prospect Street quite a lot. During heavy rains, our storm drains don't drain. They, they are totally plugged up and the water just goes down and comes back out. And on Prospect Street, I don't know, it's really hard to even see the storm drains when the water is coming down Prospect Street on that upper side of the street. It just floods the road. And so I was wondering if you could speak to, how are we addressing that kind? Because, you know, if it's just a regular storm, it's okay. But when we're having these torrential downpours, it's washing out, it's washing out Prospect Street. And the places that are the worst on Prospect Street that are down below are all the places where if you go during the rain, that's where the rain is coming down. So I don't know if it's wearing things out or if it's the freezing and thawing during the winter when we have winter storms. But there's not really any up, any drainage on the upside of the street. And, and our street is more flat. But Hannah's been part of the, my daughter, the part of the adopt a drain. And she's adopted the drains down below and she tries to keep them clean, but she can't keep that part of them, that's all jammed up now. So I know that we're having a, some kind of a evaluation of our storm drain system. And I hope that I can tie in, but it might be an engineering thing to get Prospect Street to drain because I don't think it's as much an issue of storm drains as it is making a place for the water to go. So thank you, just an observation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can address it briefly and Brian pick up where I leave off. But when we do, when we talk about the prep that our crews do for the paving, this is the type of thing they're doing. They're, they're pitching the road, they're making sure the drainage is, is working as, as intended. Over time, these, they just deteriorate. And so part of getting the contractors in to repave it is also gives us an opportunity to reset all the structures so that they, they work better and as intended. And I think if, an easy example is to look at either Main Street, when it was repaved, it's easy, right? Because now the water is not pooling anymore. Merchants Row, right? If you've been back there when it's been raining, also the water is draining. You can see this, you can sort of see the, the crest on the parking lot. So it's, it's, the water's being sent in the places where it's intending to go. Brian, is anything else you would add to that?
I would just say that we are going to add some additional drainage on to Prospect Street, knowing that there are some problem areas. The crews were doing some sewer work up there today. And, but the street crew was working up on the hill, actually, cutting a ditch in there. And we're going to put in underdrain and some more drainage to try to catch that water and keep it out of the road, because that's when the water gets in the middle of the road and that's when it starts pounding and making potholes and, and beats your pavement up. So if you can keep the water to the side and collect it, your pavement is going to last longer. So we are aware of that and we are going to add drains and ditches. And hopefully Prospect Street will outlive the rest of us here.
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up briefly on something that Bert had said about the adopted storm drain program and the sort of question of which storm drains are plugging up faster than others. In general, this is a component of the Flood Resiliency Plan that we just updated and adopted. I've been in extensive conversations with the folks who run the adopted storm drain program. And that's one of the Flood Resiliency Plan updates that I fully expect to tackle, probably late summer, early fall, once we get through the conversation about C D B G D R, which is going to take a lot of counsel's focus for the next couple of weeks to, to two months. But stay tuned for sort of more extensive conversations about that.
And lastly, Bert, and I think, ma'am, you, you had a comment last evening to this point. We know there are storm drains in the city that are, parts of our system that, that are severely compromised. You know, we know that. We know there are storm drains in the city that are parts of our system that, that are severely compromised. You know, we know that. Uh, we're actually in the process of having all of that reviewed, having our storm drains looked at, so we can see, well, how effective is the system? Because what we don't wanna do is, for example, if you were on Upper Prospect Street, uh, and it's obvious that the storm drain there is clogging, we don't wanna affect that repair. If on Lower Prospect Street, it's also compromised. And so spending that money on Upper Prospect Street isn't gonna do anything to solve the problem, really. So we really wanna wait until we have, you know, until we have a comprehensive analysis done. Sounds like a cop-out. It's not. Uh, but what this council has chosen to do, and I'm proud of them for doing it, is just listen to the science. You know, go to the experts, have things analyzed and make sure. I, I wish I could tell you that we can fix all of our storm system in a period of three years. We can't. It's gonna take even longer than that, uh, to get everything fully functional again. But we know that if we prioritize correctly, we can affect, we can cure the problem in about eighty percent of the city. So that's what we intend to do, and we'll be actually talking about that a little later on the agenda. Thank you. Uh, so, um.
Anything else?
That, okay. Counsel, we will move on to item eight D on the agenda. This is the flood resiliency plan update. Counselor Guston?
Certainly. Thank you. Uh, while Nicholas is bringing up the PowerPoint, because this is really gonna be his, uh, presentation. I did just wanna address, I did see some sort of conversation and questions online. Why is a, a housing development at elevation in another part of the city, part of the flood resiliency plan? Uh, when the flooding happened in lower elevation downtown and so on, uh, the reason for that is that the plan looks at flood resiliency as a holistic whole. And part of what happens during major flooding events is that people lose housing. Uh, either we lose housing because it is destroyed or people are temporarily displaced. Um, there's no flexibility in the housing market, and this is a fact that we know as base level fact. There's not enough flexibility in the housing market, but it gets worse when we flood badly. And so the flood resiliency plan calls for developing housing in a variety of ways and a variety of places, especially places, um, that are more flood resilient. Either by updating existing housing, which is another component of the plan, or by building new housing in sections of the city, um, that are not in the flood plain or the floodway, which, um, and Prospect had counts on, on a couple of those, uh, criteria.
Thanks, Counselor Guston. Um, so this presentation was in the packet. Uh, and this first slide, I, it's too small even for me to read on my laptop, but, uh, if you do have it printed at home, um, you can see that this is the, just a cut and paste of the, uh, language in the flood resiliency plan. And, and mirrors a lot of what Counselor Guston just mentioned about its, its importance and why it's included. Uh, but this is a reference point for, for people who understand, uh, who wanna understand what the, the relevance of the, of the project here. This is a sort of a stepping back, uh, bigger picture, um, sort of the housing projects overall mapped. They're all at various stages, uh, so, uh, you know, we have the, the North End Gateway, uh, which is discussed last night and will surely come up, uh, later tonight. Um, Wabi Park, uh, where we're working with Downstreet on four to five shared equity homes. Um, Seminary Street, uh, thirty-two units, uh, the furthest along, hoping for groundbreaking next year. Uh, one forty-three North Main Street, uh, which would be a, a really great potential housing project, uh, if the A D C is successful in acquiring the building. And then Prospect Heights, finally down in the bottom left of the screen, which is, uh, potential ninety-one units of new housing for the city. Um, just at a high level here, you can see the overhead G I S view of the, of the lot, uh, of the land that we're speaking of. Uh, so it's residential development, uh, located off of Prospect Street Countryway, Fecto Circle area in Berry City. Um, the, uh, project was, um, written, had received local zoning approval in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, the subdivision plot recorded, uh, and so we have been working to update those plans, uh, recently. Uh, here's, uh, some more, um, detail on the project as it stands today. Uh, so as I mentioned, it was initially zoned, uh, that was initially for a hundred twenty-eight units. Um, after the, um, environmental due diligence review, which the city contracted for, uh, it's now estimated that the site can, uh, hold ninety-one units, and that would be sixty-six multifamily units, twenty-five, um, single-family units. Uh, so it is, um, this site, we, we intend would, uh, would include a range of, of, uh, incomes from affordable to missing workforce housing. So this is, it has, this has a, a really broad coalition working on it. Uh, from, you know, we, uh, including, for example, uh, C V M C, uh, they're, they're also in, in need of, of housing for staff who come to the hospital. So this is really, um, this could address a lot of the, the housing challenges. I think this is responsive to the white paper done some, a couple of years ago by the Housing Task Force, which, which did identify, you know, that we are, we are in need of housing of all types in, in Berry City, and this would certainly address that. Uh, in terms of the funding, a couple of moving pieces here, the city allocated sixty thousand dollars of ARPA funding for the due diligence study, um, and the estimated cost of the project is eight point three six million. And so that, uh, and, and with an additional approximately five hundred thirty thousand additional engineering and permitting. Um, so the cities, the cost of the project is reflective of, of the infrastructure, um, to get on the site. The city's not, um, gonna build any of the housing on this site. Uh, the, the, this would be sort of, this would be a, a public-private partnership where, um, city helps get the infrastructure up there. Uh, and then the, the, the plots are sold, the lots are sold to developers, um, and partners to, to build, um, multi and single-family units. So the cost is reflective of, of infrastructure, which is the, a street's water, sewer, stormwater, et cetera. Uh, the city was awarded, uh, an approximately three million dollar grant from Northern Border Regional Commission for this project, and an additional seven hundred fifty thousand dollars was included in the most recent state budget in support of this project as well. Um, this is, um, this is from the executive summary of the due diligence report. Um, and so, uh, you can see here, the, um, I, I forwarded the full report to the council earlier today. Um, and so these are just high-level highlights. Um, so the roadway sewer and water utility generally in alignment with design, they do need updates. Um, the stormwater is undersized, and so this would be a big priority for making sure that, that that's adequate up at the location. Um, since it is, uh, above where flooding happens, we wanna protect, uh, homes, certainly downstream, downhill of, of that. Uh, as I mentioned, the cost estimate is eight point three six million, uh, with the approximate five hundred thirty thousand dollars for, uh, the engineering permitting and, and oversight. Um, and then the, um, it would require, uh, multiple state and local permits. Uh, so there's a lot of that that would go, uh, that would have to happen before we break ground here. Um, the report indicated that this may qualify for a two, act two fifty exemption, um, if it meets some affordability criteria. As I mentioned earlier, uh, the site has been, uh, now estimated to hold, uh, sixty-six family, multifamily units and twenty-five single-family units for a total of ninety-one. Um, and it would, uh, like, like any other project, would, would be, have to comply with the unified development ordinance. Uh, the next steps, um, so as I mentioned, this is a public-private, uh, partnership. Um, we have been the lead applicant, we were, the city was the lead applicant for the Northern Border Regional Commission Grant, um, because we were, we were more competitive as a, as a municipality. Um, and so we are, as I mentioned, the, our, our function is to help get the infrastructure built. Uh, developers and other partners like Downstreet, like C V M C, uh, will actually build the housing units, um, on, on this site once the infrastructure is located there. Uh, the city has a, a purchase option on the land. Uh, so once we have identified funding, there is a pathway to, to site control at this location, which is very important. Uh, this is not hypothetical, theoretical. We, we can have this land as soon as, as we identify the funding, uh, for it. And so the, uh, you know, now that we have the, a, a budget, um, that reflects, uh, an, an environmental due diligence review, uh, we, I think we can very credibly pursue the gap funding, um, and that may be through C D B G D R, as we'll discuss, uh, later today. So I think we could, uh, you know, make a, a very compelling application with, with some really credible numbers about what it costs to, uh, get this infrastructure built and what it might mean for, for the city with the ninety-one, uh, housing units. I know there's, you know, this has been, um, a project that, you know, there've been a lot of question marks about. Uh, we know, we've known it was zoned for a hundred, almost a hundred thirty units. Um, people questioned whether it was that many, uh, and now we know, we know that it's not a hundred thirty, but still ninety-one. Uh, and that is, that is, uh, I think nothing to sneeze at. That, that could certainly make a big dent, uh, in our housing, um, housing needs. Uh, and so I think it's, it's certainly having this information makes us more credible as we apply for additional funding. And that is it for the presentation. Happy to, uh, answer any questions. I can pull that up, yep.
And I'll just run through that quickly so people can fully understand sort of the funding model and, and why this looked, looked attractive to us, uh, originally, and they still exist. Um, Prospect Heights Development, uh, was actually a separate corporation that was formed by B A D C, Area Area Development Corporation. So that's how it all started. B A D C, um, believed in the project, and so they pursued through the Northern Borders Regional Commission. They pursued a approximately three million dollar grant. The actual amount is, um, two million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. So that is money that was granted by the Northern Borders Regional Commission, which is a sort of a conglomerate of the New England states, and they approve and, and, uh, grants, uh, annually. So we were absolutely delighted, uh, to be able to get this grant, and that's where really, that's what sort of sold the city that, look, we may need to be paying more attention to this, because if you think about it, uh, in simple terms, if you were looking at a home and you were looking at a, a three hundred thousand dollar home, and you said, boy, I, I, I don't know if I can swing, uh, three hundred thousand dollar home. And then your uncle came up to you and said, I want you to have a home. If you buy that home, I'll give you a hundred thousand dollars. You'd figure out a way to do it. You'd look at your spouse, you'd look at your partner, and you'd say, look, it may be a struggle, but holy cow, you know, my uncle will, will cover one-third of the cost of this project. Well, that's the position the city found itself in, and so we started paying more attention and, and really looking at the project. We knew, because if the project was originally permitted thirty years ago, um, we knew just as, as stormwater retention methods and different permitting methods and different standards, uh, have evolved over the last thirty years, we knew that the project was gonna, that the number of housing units uh, was going to be shrunk. At one point, I think we had a number around seventy.
Yes.
And then we had our, then when we had our, uh, the due diligence report done, uh, that number, uh, grew to, uh, supporting ninety-one. Now, keep in mind, some of those are, some of those are, um, multifamily units. And right from the beginning, as we put our board of directors together for Prospect Heights, which originally was an independent board of directors, that board of directors sort of segued into sort of a committee membership, uh, appointed by the council. Um, Central Vermont Medical Center was right there. Our employers were right there. John Mandeville from Central Vermont Council on Aging, who advocates for and assists our seniors, those folks were all right there because we knew it. So it was a variety of partners, all saying the same thing. See, you know, C V M C looking at us and saying, we have two hundred vacancies. Now, sometimes, not all the time, but too many times, we'll actually offer a job to someone out of state. They desperately look for a place where they would desire to live. They can't find it, and they pass on the job. So the fact that Central Vermont Medical Center, and let me tell you this, I don't think they'd be upset if I disclose this too bad. Um, you know, they wanna partner with someone. They absolutely intend on some level, if we're successful in bringing Prospect Heights to, to fruition, they want to be able to partner with a developer on some level to provide employee housing for the medical center. Um, as the manager said, we'll do it, it will, we'll do it on a variety of income levels. Some of it, I can tell you, will be subsidized. But, you know, we're Berry, Vermont. I mean, a significant portion of our population survives at or below the poverty level. And I've always believed that, that housing, if you take one hundred units of housing and thirty percent of the people who live in your community survive at or below the poverty level, well, thirty percent should be affordable, should be subsidized. Because i- if you don't, you know, not, not to be glib or snotty or anything, you know, I'm not looking to turn Berry into stuff. I want it to be welcome and available, available to everyone. So for that nurse or doctor who might work at Central Vermont Medical Center, well, obviously, they're not gonna qualify for subsidized housing. But they could still build a fine home or occupy a fine apartment in Prospect Heights. There'll be something there for everyone. So, uh, as, so as we got going, the governor, you're really struggling. Yeah, that's all right.
They're, they're, they're able to see them.
Yeah, no, no, they can see it. So they can see it on, so basically, so think of it this way. Uh, and I'll use exact numbers, eight million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollar project cost. The governor, in his budget, in his, this year's budget, the governor was kind enough to allocate seven hundred and fifty thousand. So boom, there's another seven fifty. Uh, our N B R C, Northern Borders Regional Commission Grant was two million eight seventy-five, eight seventy. That leaves an unmet, unmet need of five million two sixty-four, zero, six, three on a nine million dollar project. So honestly, from my point of view, and thankfully from the coun- council's point of view, it's just too good an opportunity to pass up because that funding is there. Now we just have to go out and we have to seek through the C D B G D R funds. We have to seek the remainder of the funding. And, you know, looking at, so now the project is funded, uh, happy day. And we find ourselves, but now we have lots to sell. So our plan is, no, that's okay. No, just pull it down. You gotta pull it down a little bit. So, yeah, pull it down to the next section. I'll probably make you ruin it. Okay, see, yeah, uh, go up a little bit, cause I'm not quite a grand list. I'm at the housing stuff. So, so keep in mind, the project is fully funded. Now, we're going to sell lots. We're not, we're not giving them away. Um, I can tell you that, you know, in my part-time job, I develop real estate. And right now, if you want to buy a fully developed lot in Berrytown, there really aren't any available in Berry City, so the price point is tough. But a fully developed lot in Berrytown is about eighty-five thousand dollars. Very expensive. So I looked at this and I said, okay, well, if we were gonna, you know, entry-level lots, eight of them. Because, you know, some of them have to be more affordable than others. So I'm even using really, I wanna encourage people to build homes. So in my model, and, and this hasn't been voted on or set by the council, but in my model, I said, well, we've had, we would have eight that are entry-level, and we would sell those lots, not for eighty thousand, not for seventy thousand. We'd sell them for thirty thousand, because if we can bring, we all hear about the orders of building, how much it costs to build a home these days? Well, you know, do the math. If you bring the lot price down, then you bring the overall price of the home down. More people can afford it. So we would have, I figured around eight that we would probably sell for thirty thousand, seventeen, uh, total is twenty-five. We would sell for sixty, you know, they would be more market rate for the, for the nurse at the hospital who can afford a sixty thousand dollar lot. And then the multifamily, I just did that at a, at a straight twenty, because again, that's, that's going up. So a multifamily lot, while you may look at it and say, boy, that's a bargain, twenty thousand per unit, you're probably getting about thirty units, because you, you're going up with the multifamily. So you're getting about thirty units on a lot, so it would actually be a very expensive lot. So if we had gross sales of, you know, two and a half million dollars, closing cost of eight percent, netting two point three million dollars, what I would love to see the city with that, do with that money, is do it again. Find somewhere else in the city that we could possibly develop, whether, and, you know, quite frankly, it, it could be on the north end. It could be in an area that is prone to flooding, but if we could keep doing that, just like business people do, just like I've done my whole life. You know, we take profits from one project, we roll it into another, and we just keep building on it. So hopefully the city can do that. Now, the really good news is if I take a reasonable, yeah, there you go. If I take a reasonable, um, assessment, figured the single-family homes are assessed at two hundred and seventy-five thousand per unit. So I'm taking all of this in today's dollars, and right now, the property tax assessments, someone will probably throw something at me. But right now, the property tax assessments in Berry City are actually way below market value. So I use two seventy-five to be pretty conservative, and on the multifamily, I figured a hundred and fifty thousand a unit. That would, you all heard about grow the grand list, grow the grand list. Well, this would grow the grand list by about seventeen million dollars. That would result in a municipal, not education, education is more, a municipal proj- uh, tax revenue increase of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars. We would collect that much more in property taxes. And we were, just a moment ago, we were talking about paving and what a difference a hundred and thirty thousand dollars made. Well, imagine, you know, Nicholas is drooling over here as he imagines having three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars more to spend. So that's sort of the project in a nutshell. That's why, you know, it, it just checks all the boxes for the city of Mary. So I'm, I, I'm real excited about it, and I am absolutely endorsing, uh, the city submitting a, a C D B G D R grant application for five million two hundred and sixty-four thousand sixty-three dollars. and I am absolutely endorsing the city submitting a CDBGDR grant application for $5,264,063. So any questions about Prospect Heights? Anyone? And yes, it is higher. It will have retention ponds. People have said, so let me get this straight. You have people living way up in the hills, and they're going to send all their floodwater back down to the city where you already have problem. Yes, they are. That's exactly what's going to happen. I don't control gravity. Water will run downhill. And that's why you've heard the manager have started to address, you know, we do have to do some upgrades on our infrastructure. And that is primarily why you could never build 125 homes on that site, because you need water retention ponds, and you see those all over. So, you know, I really don't have concerns. I, listen, I wish the whole city was, you know, on a plateau on top of a mountain, and we never flooded at all. But, you know, we have needs. We have to manage the resources that we have. And that means that in areas where we can develop, and we can permit in accordance with modern standards, and not be sending floods of, we're not going to send floods of rainwater, you know, into our downtown. But obviously, it's going to have an effect that will need to be managed. And that's the whole point of the permitting process. So happy to answer any, yes, Mr. Anthony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I applaud the work out of the project. One thing that came up tonight that I think is pertinent, Counselor Deering mentioned models that involve what are called shared equity in order to achieve affordability and perpetuity. That is to say, where the land, for instance, is never part of a future transaction, but remains, if you will, with the developer, maybe a nonprofit, maybe not. And in consequence, the appreciation can actually be capped so that the unit, if it's ever resold, remains affordable, and the appreciation is managed. And I compliment Counselor Deering for raising that last night. And I think not only pertinent for the, in quotes, affordable units, but several types of units in order to guarantee the future viability of the diverse vision that you have, Mr. Mayor.
I couldn't agree more, Peter. I think that's a really interesting model. And again, which is why I was using that $30,000 number. And some might argue, look, Tom, that number's too low, even for subsidized housing. Well, that number's intended to be a blend. So within that, you could have different tiers of income. So there could be some folks who, they're 100% land-backed, and it costs them zero to acquire that lot so that they can afford the home, and they can build that equity. And for others, it may not be 30, it may be 40,000. So, you know, it sort of tears up the way I envisioned it. And I'm interested in hearing about any and all programs, any developer, anyone who is interested in this project and says, hey, like you, I have an idea. Have you considered this? Absolutely, we're going to. So thank you for your question. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Sam Stock. I have a couple of questions. One is about the 8-plus million. And does that cover doing stormwater from Prospect Heights down to the river? Does it include a new system so that it doesn't, you don't attach a new system to an old system that already doesn't work?
Yes. Where, where it needs to be upgraded, yes, that's, those are the total project cost. Not all of the, a lot of the stormwater work is going to be happening on-site. So when they talk about, look, your stormwater infrastructure simply isn't, you know, it's not robust enough, it won't work. They're talking mainly about the areas, the upper areas on Prospect Street, so those would require some work.
And also lower Prospect Street?
No, because you're, you're shedding, within the design process, you're actually shedding rainwater. You're not sending all of the rainwater, some of it, most of it, you're actually processing on-site. You know, interestingly, when they looked at, because of low-flow measures, when you look at water usage, it actually went down. Not because the number of units, it went down significantly, because again, over the last 30 years, now we have 1.6-gallon toilets as opposed to three-gallon toilets. And that was, that was one thing I found really interesting, is that the projected water usage actually went down, not up, even though you're adding units.
That is wastewater and not stormwater.
Correct. No, that is, well, yeah, correct.
And I was just wondering, so has there been a cost-benefit analysis? Like, here's the cost. Well, I meant, you know, like, overall, for, for the city as a whole, for its investment in infrastructure, is there a sort of a, this is the various ways it's gonna, it's gonna benefit the city. And I saw your budget, yes, it looks fine.
Well, the, okay.
As opposed to some other housing projects that have been proposed?
Well, when we get to our list, AE on our agenda, you'll see that I'm looking to do a lot more than, it's not going to be a one-and-done. I think this is a great project. You know, again, started out with that $3 million grant, that was a huge shot in the arm. When you look at the numbers, when, again, I didn't look at the education side of the taxes, that would probably be about equal. If you look at our schools, and how many students they were built for, and how many students actually go there, in terms of the cost, you know, cost burden on education, I don't think there'd be a huge incremental cost. If you talk to our police chief and fire chief, there's virtually no incremental cost in having 91 units, more units up on Prospect Street. When you talk to people who are looking to find a job, can't find a house, when you look at a young couple who can't afford a house, I think the benefit speaks for itself. So, you know, as I look at, as I turn this all different ways and look at the cost benefit to the city, I see nothing but upside. Yes?
Let me just briefly, so in terms of the funding package for the infrastructure, right now, where it sits, this was spelled out in the manager's presentation, a little under $4 million has been secured in grants. So that's not really at cost to the city. The remaining, there is a potential, as the mayor will discuss this next, there's a potential to get it through CDBGR funding, which is additional grants, which I guess you could make an extension of an argument that that is an opportunity cost to the city, but that would also not come directly out of the city's operational budget, or any of our special projects funds, or anything like that. And furthermore, the $4 million that we've already received, we don't get it unless we do the project. It's marked for the project, it was applied for the project, it specifically describes the project, it doesn't, effectively does not exist if the project does not exist. So it's not really a, it's the same kind of loss cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Then I'll come to you, sir. Yep, if you could come up, that would be really great. Otherwise, people don't hear you at home.
I have a question.
There's not many of us up there that are in favor of Prospect Street Heights. We've dealt with Green Acres, we've dealt with Highgate. There's been nothing but problems ever since those buildings went in. I don't know if any of you people have ever lived on the west side, but it's worse than north end. And if you notice any of that plumbing, the oldest plumbing in the city is on the west side. And I looked over some of the views for this building going in, and I didn't see any ponds. But I can tell you, the ponds that they have affect those up off of Richardson Road don't work. A lot of people are getting flooded with those ponds. It fills over, and then it dumps over. And I think you're into wetlands up there also, aren't you? It's supposed to be 50 feet from wetlands.
Correct.
Somebody went, went along there and got it dropped to 25.
No.
It's still within 50 feet. Now, you got two cars per apartment. So how many units are you proposing putting in?
66.
66. So that's 66 apartments times two. Are you guys putting in another road up there? Another way to get in and out? Because the ones that we have certainly aren't going to work. Now that you've got city baron up in that area, all the trucks and everything coming down, now you've got double the amount of traffic. And you worried about fixing Prospect Street? And the, and a lot of problems with Prospect Street is, when they put the drains in on that hill, everything goes down, and it shoots back up out of those drains because it doesn't empty out, and it never has. From the day one, they put those drains in. We have the same problem on Branch Street. They put drains, Brian, if you're listening, you've been up there twice to fix that, on both ends. Why we have to have storm drains on a hill is beyond me. Both those drains are mining on both ends of that street, which has, if anybody else that's lived on Broken Street can see the mining from their street, pulling the street down. Never had problems until they put those drains in. Prospect Street, half of that hole that you filled in was because the water doesn't drain, it shoots back up. So I don't know what the answer is, but I know most of us in the area are not happy with Prospect Street Heights for various reasons. And I don't believe the people that have bought their single homes up around there are very happy either. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, you. Thank you.
My name is Peter Kellman. I own property, three rental properties in Barry, but I actually live in Montpelier. And I want to compliment you on this project. So if you read the newspaper, you'll see our Country Club Road project has hit a whole lot of problems. And so I guess one of my questions to you is, have you looked at, do you anticipate having any issues with Act 250, or some of the kinds of problems that Montpelier has faced with the Country Club Road project? Or do you think this is going to be more smooth sailing?
Well, listen, I love our neighbors in Montpelier. Your mayor is a good friend. I hope it's a lot smoother than your time than you're having in Montpelier. But look, we have a lot of faith in our engineers. You know, we just received a 150-page due diligence report. He identified that this property may actually qualify for an Act 250 exemption. We're not counting on that. You know, we know what the stormwater permitting requirements are. We know what the wastewater permits requirement, requirements are. We know we have capacity in not only our wastewater, but also our water plant. So, you know, we have anticipated, we have anticipated those, and we've covered those in the due diligence. I've been developing personally to know, you know, long enough to know that, yeah, there are surprises sometimes in the permitting process. There are very few times when they're, they are insurmountable. You know, generally, it results in a dollar figure. But I think, you know, Nicholas, I don't know if you feel differently, but, you know, we've been working at this for the better part of two years. I think we're covering our bases, and I'm very optimistic, you know, very optimistic that we'll receive the necessary permits.
And you're not looking at TIP for any of these ways of financing?
No, we could look to the CHIP program if we wanted to, but, but currently, there's not that need. You know, the, well, I think the more prudent way to go would be the CDBGDR, Community Development Block Grant slash, you know, Disaster Recovery Program, because we can certainly make the case, you know, we're looking to develop 91 housing units. We can make the case that we lost over 50 in the flood, and they haven't come back. And, you know, with all due respect to our neighbors, I don't think there's any other community in Central Vermont that can, that can make that point and make it successfully, and we can. You know, we're just replacing what we lost. And, and ma'am, I did want to make one comment relative to, you know, something you said about, you know, Green Acres and Highgate. And, you know, I'm sorry if that hasn't always been a positive experience for you, and that's why I'm absolutely adamant that we don't replicate it. You know, I don't think that someone who wasn't as fortunate as I am should be precluded from living in the same neighborhood. I don't believe that. You know, I'm not a snob. I have friends from all walks of life, and I'd never judge someone by the size of their wallet. And I think the best communities are a place where people from all walks of life can live next to each other. And the only thing that will judge you on is whether you're a good neighbor. If you're a good neighbor, and, you know, that's what we've said a lot of times, is we've addressed issues in the city. We don't have issues with people recreating in City Hall Park. I take great offense when you damage it, and then I want you out. So I just had to say that. I apologize. And I'm, but I'm sorry I haven't had a good experience. But as I said, we're not looking to replicate it. Anyone else? Yes. Amy, how are you?
Hi. I just want to make a suggestion. I don't know if there's any additional funding source for it, but one type of housing that's hard to find is physically accessible. So things like one-story living or ramp access, that kind of thing. So I don't know if that can be built into the proposal, or if it might open up additional funding sources. I just know, looking for, trying to find housing that would be better suited for an elderly family member who's living with me, like, it's hard to find, find the right mix. And where I am has worked out okay. But, you know, even in terms of things like if there are duplexes, could they be, you know, first story and second story, as opposed to two that require stairs? I'm just trying to think of it, both for people who might have current disabilities, or to make it easier for people to age in place. We do in Vermont have, you know, an aging population. There's a housing need for them. And also, maybe there's some nexus with that, and the location being close to, and the potential partnership with, like, CBMC, you know, just having things be accessible. I don't know if there would be some way that those would work together, but just a thought.
No, that's, Amy, thank you. That's, that's a really great suggestion, and one that we've talked about, one that we thought about. You know, as I said earlier, we've got John Mandeville from Central Vermont Council on Aging. He is their executive director. He's also on the Board of Prospect Heights. And, you know, let's face it, we're the, we're the oldest state in the country. So if we don't, if anyone is building housing, and they're not making a provision for, you know, for our senior neighbors who need single level living, and that's one of the good things about the contour of that land up there, is that it lends itself well to have two stories that are actually single-story but walk-in, you know, so a lower, lower level and an upper level, without really sacrificing, you know, style, without sacrificing daylight, and you can still make an attractive, an attractable living unit. So thanks for that suggestion, and we're absolutely going to take it to heart. Yes?
I didn't have a chance to, I didn't have a chance to review the whole due diligence report, but I was wondering, I guess my concern is more about landslides. Has that been a landslide? Because if we're building a big development on the side of a hill, that seems like there could be potential for landslides. And since we've seen that here in Barry, how are we going to mitigate that?
Well, we've seen, you know, again, if you, if you, when you get through the whole engineering report, I think that will answer a lot of your questions. If you look at the isolated, isolated areas where we have had landslides, some of those areas, I mean, it did affect developed areas. A lot of it was in undeveloped areas. But I'm not aware from any of the borings or any of the due diligence that they've done, that they're concerned about those subsoils. And that's generally where you'll see, you know, where you have unstable subsoils, the borings would show that, and they haven't.
So that would be in the report, though?
Yes.
I can find that in the report?
You can find that in the report.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think it's flat.
I'm, oh, no, you have to go up here, Representative Booton. Oh, then never mind? Okay, okay. Any other questions before, oh, no, Michael, please?
I was just saying that I think it's relatively flat up there, that I might be, I'd be wrong on that.
It's, the areas that are going to be developed, yes, are relatively flat. It's, it's apparently, I mean, it's Barry. So, you know, I live on a hill. So when, I don't think of it as hilly, but it, you come up, like Jake Street is a pretty steep street. And so you come up steep, depending on which way you come in. You can come in two ways in that particular tract of land. But it comes up, the development actually occurs on the plateau. And again, when the, when borings were done years ago, there was nothing that indicated there were any unstable soils there. And in '23 and '24, there were no mudslides up there.
Right.
Or land shifting. Thank you. Anyone else? And we're okay, then council will move on to fun stuff. We're going to move on to item AE on the agenda. This is going to be a lot of information. We're going to discuss the CDBGDR projects. Councilperson, I'd like to start with a list that you submitted to the council, if we could.
I'm happy to.
Give me one second.
Nicholas is bringing that up, and I-
Nicholas is bringing that up and I can go over it verbally before. Well, he's bringing that up, ma'am. May I ask, do you see our goal for tonight's conversation? To move a certain number of projects forward, move a certain number of projects totaling a certain dollar amount forward? Just come to a general consensus?
I mean, we don't need specific, we need some direction. If there are, if there are plans or if there are topics that really, like, you know, the north end or downtown housing that really jump out at the council, it would be helpful to have, for example, Prospect Heights. We just spent a lot of time on Prospect Heights. So we might as well start there. Our ask under Prospect Heights would be five million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, sixty-three dollars. So if no one has an objection, and you had that on your list, you just didn't have the, the hard numbers?
Yeah, I had, and I had slightly different numbers.
So we intend to move that project forward. Five million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, sixty-three dollars for infrastructure. So unless the manager hears differently from the council, unless the majority of the council says, we don't like it, we, we, we hate that. I'm sure, I know what I'm going to do tomorrow. I'm going to pick up the phone. I'm going to call Josh Jerome and I'm going to say, we got to get to work.
Yeah, I do. I'm first, to be clear, I'm totally fine with putting the infrastructure in for a CDBGDR grant. I guess I would be interested to see if there's an additional conversation about asking for an additional amount that would provide some start to housing construction up there. That was sort of what I initially, and for those in the audience, this was my initial memo up there and we can go through it. But I'd be curious if there's appetite on council for adding.
I don't, we, I mean, Angie Harbin from Downstreet actually sits on the board of Prospect Heights. We've made it very clear to her right from the beginning that, that she has a seat at the table and there's a place for her and her organization and her clients. So, so no, I would have, I'd like to maybe check in with Angie and say, well, okay, what program would you like to envision up there? Would it be a single family home? Would it be multi? So I'd just like to, I'm not at all opposed to it. I'd just like to check in with Angie and see if they've had some thoughts.
So I put a soft number of two million for some additional housing. And I think we could, it would be interesting to hear what Angie and Downstreet could talk about that. I would be in favor if they came up earlier, a shared equity model for that housing. And I guess we could discuss whether we wanted to structure it as incentive, straight building. I think there's a couple of different possibilities there. Would you like me to just continue the list?
Yeah, just go right through it.
Sure. The next project that I had pitched is Wabi Park, which is a conversation we've had at council previously. Just to recap for folks, there has been conversation and progress towards taking the existing Wabi Park, which is that playground next to the Public Safety Building, building housing units there and then finding another spot in the north end for green space. And we have various options to do that. As the manager had said previously this evening, there are existing sort of soft agreements with Downstreet for four to five shared equity homes in that space. So I had pitched as an idea, a total of four million dollars for a grant application. And let me be clear, I don't know anything about site conversion or infrastructure or what's needed there. So I just put an idea number of two million to get that space ready. And that would also include, this came up at the forum last night. We've known for some time now that we need to build additional access to the Public Safety Building because when Main Street floods, our emergency vehicles can't get out. And so that two million dollars would also include construction of a road. And as manager indicated last night, there have already been conversations with the property owner and there is already the sort of existing framework that we could use to do that. So that would then become emergency access for new residents and also our emergency vehicles. And then I had pitched an additional two million dollars to get that housing off the ground. And we talked about these being sort of small, single family, again, shared equity, shared equity model housing. Would you like me to just continue? Would you like to do a conversation on these?
If anyone has questions or just, I mean, raise your hand, Councilperson would be happy to stop and, or we could, you know, wrap it up and do a comprehensive, whatever, you know, we're not a big group here, however they want to roll.
All right. I will keep looking up after each one, but I'll keep forward. The next project is something I represent for two. I was in this area on July ten, twenty twenty-three. I have very clear visceral memories and have worked with residents since then on how badly the Courier Park neighborhood flooded. We had previously, when we worked with the river folks last fall, they had identified three different projects in that area that would be flood mitigation projects, creating additional flood plain at Nelson Street. That's upstream of Courier Park. Then creating additional flood plain at Jefferson Street. If you're familiar, behind the Mathews and School, there's like this low lying grassy wetlands area that could be lowered and expanded into flood plain. Installing a debris catcher before the stream gets channelized when it goes through Courier Park. Installing a debris catcher in that stream area would prevent some of those culverts from plugging up and overflowing, which is essentially what caused the flooding in that area. Due to the July twenty twenty-three flooding, those channel walls in a number of places have started to collapse. They are old granite block walls. They're sort of caving in. They are making that channel even smaller than it already is. And the, my proposed project would rebuild those walls. Someone, I think it was Amy Galford, said last night something that's been ringing in my head since, which that we are trying to expand flood plain, bring the river back to its natural course, recreate corridor and all that as much as possible. But to a certain degree, in large parts of Barry City, I believe her phrase was you break it, you bought it. We have created an unnatural river course within the city. And in places where, such as the Courier Park, sort of channelized section of the Potash River that runs through there, in those places, unless we bought out twenty houses, we are not going to repair and restore that river corridor. So what we can do is the best we can with creating a stable river channel in that area. So my project would propose rebuilding where it is collapsing and you can go into people's backyards. It's, it's fallen in. And that is an area we've discussed as council where there are probably likely some spots to, to remove sediment as we discussed before. And then lastly, yes.
So who estimated three billion dollars for that project?
That was, that was purely off the top of my head. And as we continued, if we continued with this project, we would absolutely have to get a further due diligence. I, not, well, all right, it wasn't purely off the top of my head. I looked at the numbers that SLR provided for creating flood plain at the Air Street site, which included moving of certain amounts of cubic feet. I looked at the numbers for the debris catcher for Brook Street. I did make up the repair the walls number because I don't know what that takes.
I just was naive on that.
Yeah.
There, I guess, and this three billion dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Comparable to, you know, other projects.
So, and in the list, did it show up? Yeah, okay. So you can see up there, anywhere I wrote EST, that's my best attempt based on comparable projects. And if we don't already, some of these, we already do have the numbers in hand. But anywhere it says EST is, is truly my best attempt. And we will have to do some due diligence as part of the grant writing going forward. The last piece of this project would be that when that area flooded, when that channel caved and collapsed, when the water overflowed, there was significant foundation damage on adjacent properties up and along that channel. And I would propose including a certain number of grants up to a certain dollar amount that residents in that area could apply for to repair what is still existing flood damage from July twenty twenty-three.
So could I comment on that one for, for just a second? And again, I'm not, I'm not at all disputing that property was damaged, that, that it's a problem. The only issue is I went through your list and thank you because you're putting the work in and I appreciate that. The only thing I questioned is I said, okay, have we done anything other than walk the Potash Brook through Courier Park? And, and have we done anything at all? Like, are we anywhere on engineering or even trying to understand the problem? We're kind of not. So knowing, so I, I'm just want to say that knowing that there, there is, there's, so folks, there's sixty-eight million dollars available statewide. Roughly fifty-five million dollars coming to Washington County for communities that were affected in two thousand twenty-three, not twenty-four. So with all due respect to our neighbors in Plainfield, they were, that was a twenty-four event for Plainfield, not a twenty-three event. They're going to be waiting for, you know, next year's money. Montpelier certainly can't make the case that they lost housing the way we did. They were not. And again, I'm not, I never try to minimize someone suffering because the merchants in the downtown, in downtown Montpelier suffered just as ours did. So fifty-five million dollars coming to Washington County. You know, Barry could certainly make the case for the lion's share of that money. But we're still going to have to prioritize because they put, they put emphasis on housing. And so when I looked at your, the one right under that, and I know we'll get to that in a minute, I always think, okay, if, if we have to start prioritizing projects, projects that are going to be of greater benefit to those along Stevens Branch are probably going to rise to the top in my mind. Only because, not because there isn't a need, you know, I, one of my best friends lives, you know, at Sixth North Street on Courier Park, his basement flooded, so I get it. But when, but I think we're going to have to prioritize to try to alleviate as much flooding for as many people as we can with the dollars that we have, which we know are going to be limited.
Yeah, and I certainly don't disagree with any of that. I would, I would argue that this is a contributor to Stevens Branch flooding as well. That this channel is responsible for, the more water we can sequester in the more places, the less we'll end up in the Stevens Branch. So I do think that there is absolutely benefit to addressing the mitigation in this, in this area. The next, the next point, stormwater system upsizing. I think we could sink the entire fifty-five million into this. But I had ballparked three to five million. The catch with this one, and I admit that I have not quite figured out the logistics of this one, is that, as had been mentioned earlier in this meeting, the city has commissioned a complete stormwater system scoping study from SLR. And if they really rush, I think we'll see that in late fall, early winter, which is before we, the applications for this funding are due. So what we would have to essentially do in order to apply for this is either rely on existing knowledge about the stormwater system, which as you've heard before tonight, there is some, but it is perhaps not as comprehensive as it should be. Or, and I don't know if the grant will allow this, we would have to write a grant for a certain amount and say, we would like five million dollars and we have commissioned this study. And when the results of the study come back, we will do the top five million dollars worth of what has been identified as a need in this study. So this is, I badly would like us to apply for funding to upgrade and work on our stormwater system. But we're a little bit of a chicken and an egg with knowing exactly the best place to put this money right now. So I don't quite have an answer for that, but I do think it absolutely has to be part of the conversation. The next, the next piece. Amazingly, you can almost never match federal dollars with federal dollars. If you've written federal grants before, for this one, we can. So we have approximately, it's actually probably a little less, maybe it's more like three, three and a half million dollars remaining in match due on, some of you really remember that a number of years ago, there was a congressionally directed spending grant applied for to do eight million dollars in upgrades to the Barry Auditorium. Among them HVAC upgrades, accessibility upgrades, basically making it a modern facility, both in the sense that it is a frequently used city building and also asserts as the regional emergency shelter. So I would like us to apply, and the great news about this project is we have, we've written it already. We have the CDS. We know exactly what we already needed to do. We would probably update the costs a little bit and we can run with this. But we could completely close out that eight million dollar project with an additional commitment of probably a little less than four million dollars. For that. The next one, Brook Street three project, this is the Gunners Brook project that we talked about for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program that as the manager said earlier, we're moved to medium alternate, what was medium alternate, whatever their phrase was. I will take this moment to say I am profoundly disappointed that Barry did not get any projects funded during the Hazard Mitigation Grant process after we spent nine months working with the River Projects folks. So it was really, really disappointing not to get any of them. We had early indications that the Gunners Brook, Brook Street project was probably not going to be, rise to the top of the list. So I put it on the list and this is to revisit, this is to relocate the, the sort of trash barriers, those burn, those things of, the racks, thank you, the trash racks. So that they do less blocking and more catching, which is what they're supposed to do. There's a plan that SLR previously reviewed with the city and city council meetings, if anyone's curious. It would also create a digital flood plain with buyouts at Harrington Avenue, which are going forward. And then it would create a berm sort of alongside, like parallel Brook Street, if you can picture it, to also keep water from going up on the Maple Ave, which is what happened twenty-three.
If I may interrupt. Just on this one, the estimate from SLR was seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, so we can not number down.
We've got a bargain.
Yep. Around eight hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I did not have those numbers when I, when I worked this list. All right. The next project I'd like to pitch is downtown housing incentives. We've talked a lot of council about infill, about creating housing in the dense core downtown where there is existing infrastructure. The more people who live downtown, the more vibrant our downtown is economically and socially. So this proposal would have two parts. One is a planning grant to study conditions for building housing in the downtown, specifically looking at existing buildings, potentially upper floors that are maybe not being used to their full potential. What are the actual costs and the actual potential and possibilities? Maybe there's office space that is just not filling as people thought it might pre-COVID. Would those be possible for converting to housing? Or looking at a little bit like we did with the Seminary Street lot that's becoming a Downstreet housing building, looking at additional possibilities for building in what admittedly are relatively tight lots right in the downtown, but do offer other advantages. So looking at those conditions, really identifying what we could move forward with, creating a plan for us to chase with future potential federal dollars or other dollars. And then the second part of this project would then fill in initiatives for owners and developers to build up either by converting upper floors of existing buildings into housing units, maybe upgrading existing downtown apartments. Or probably that's all we have the money for. But like in my dream world, we could add floors to the downtown because I think building up in the downtown has tremendous potential. And we could probably structure that something like a certain dollar amount per unit for renovation or a certain dollar amount per unit for conversion. There have been attempts at doing this in the past and generally they have failed because the, the costs are higher than could be, could be made possible by developers. So this money could maybe bridge that gap. And I think if we move forward with this, we should have some of those conversations and say, okay, if you had an extra twenty-five thousand dollars per unit, could that get you to that eight, ten unit project that you had planned? The next idea is elevation. We've had extensive conversations at council about elevating homes. We had nine hundred thousand dollars from the state of Vermont to dispersivity grants to elevate homes. We were able to do three houses with that, so roughly estimated cost of three hundred thousand dollars per site. I would love to see us elevate six more homes. These are folks in spots that we know we can make safe if we just get them up a few more feet. And this could also include elevating utilities. Last, but not least, this is a little bit of a like, just tossed it out there because I'm fascinated by the idea. And I want to give full credit to Peter Anthony, who had talked this idea through with me as part of our development of the Flood Resiliency Plan. The idea here is that, you know, and we said it earlier in this meeting, we are always talking about growing the grand list. We just need to grow the grand list. We just need to grow the grand list. And we use that phrase so often and repeatedly. I would love to do a really deep, thoughtful, forward-looking study on, okay, to what, how, what, what's our number? We've seen these numbers for countywide, we've seen these numbers statewide. You need to add X additional housing units or X additional commercial opportunities in order to either house people or provide the tax revenue. But what does that look like for Barry City? And I would love this to also like have a conversation about future budgetary needs. We, we always have hopes and dreams for services we want to provide to our residents. We had conversations about that during our budget process. Uh, we had conversations about that during our budget process this year. What could we really, if we looked out five to ten years from now, and we really saw a thriving Berry City because we were able to, I don't know, triple the paving budget and hire a full rec department? And like, if we really started dreaming big, and then we said, okay, what's that number look like? And then back it up and say, where are our goals year by year to grow the grand list and to grow our tax-based opportunities to get us there? What does that start to look like? Because I think that can then provide us with, instead of, and I don't disagree with our crush to just keep adding housing right now, that's just where we are, that is a reality for us right now. But it would, I think it would be really, um, a really productive conversation for us to be able to say, here's the ten, fifteen, twenty-year outlook. So we don't have to feel this panic about right now, but we are marching steadily towards something that is a thriving Berry City of the future. Um, and I marked that one as just two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's just a nice little one. There is, what I, there is interesting planning money in this grant that I think is going to be underutilized. So I kind of put that on thinking that might be like a nice little bite, um, that is, that goes toward a section of the, the, the grant is partitioned off into certain amounts of money for certain types of projects. Uh, so I think this might be an area where, uh, not enough, uh, is put forward, and we might as well try something. So that is my list.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am? Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
It's the problem with sitting in the back.
Um, I just had one question, and I'm going back to Prospect Street Heights. I know we've already discussed it lengthfully, but who's paying for all that plumbing to go to Prospect Street Heights?
The grant money that we have secured so far and that we are proposing for the CDBGDR would cover all the infrastructure, including the plumbing, the sewer.
So the city taxpayers are not paying for all that plumbing?
Not if we are successful in all our grant applications.
And will it be run by, um, property managers? Who's gonna run that building?
Well, it depends, you know, again, it depends on who we partner with. So when, you know, my vision for the single-family homes is they'll be exactly that, single-family homes. Um, you know, that, that doesn't mean that there couldn't be a homeowners organization that takes care of the track, you know, you, that you have a homeowners association, but not the same as condominium association. Having said that, some of those multifamily units could in fact be condominiums. So we really can't answer that question. Uh, again, I keep taking stock in our partners. People like, you know, not some lightweights, you know, Central Mountain Medical Center wants to partner with someone to provide employee housing. So, you know, I'm sure that some of those units, because you do need a mix, would be rental units, and I suspect they would have a property manager. But I would, I would hope that over fifty percent would be owned.
Okay, and, um, I guess that's all I wanted to ask. I just wanted to make sure we aren't paying. Who's building, who's, who's handling the building project?
Haven't partnered with a builder yet either.
Oh, good.
I've spoken to many, uh, spoken to obviously the factos, uh, who, uh, own the property currently. Spoken to Trumshwinard builders, spoken with La Genes Construction. So, you know, we have plenty of potential partners, and my, my suspicion is that you won't see a single builder bite off that whole project. But you'll see a lot, and that's what I'd love to see, work with local people and give them opportunities.
So the city's not maintaining any of this, and we're not doing any of the development? And we're not doing any of the waterways?
Ma'am, ma'am, we can barely pave roads. We're not getting into property management, okay?
I'm just saying, it's quite, it's gonna be quite the big, quite the building.
It's, it's an exciting opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else have a question? Oh, Peter, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to shine a flashlight in the, uh, final subject matter that Counselor, uh, Guston touched on. It seems to me historically, uh, we have spent enormous amount of resources in the city to make sure, uh, that the money that's raised, uh, goes to what the voters said it goes to, uh, that it can be accounted for, that our audits are clean. But we have not had an effort to essentially target revenue goals. And I think my version of what I heard is we really need to know what it is we think is practicable and what's the timeline. Uh, you can use the phrase of growing the grand list, but frankly, it's gonna probably be a mix of grand list growth and external financing. And I don't know that we have any resource internal to the city devoted to that, other than the, uh, city manager, who of course is wearing six hats. So I, I really think that's worth, uh, some investment of what's the target, and then how do we get there? Thanks.
Uh, so, so you're talking about relative to not only Prospect Heights, but also other projects in the city here?
Yes, that's correct.
We, we, listen, the, the manager and I, um, I beat the bushes, the manager beats the bushes every day. Uh, the gentleman who, because I had a con, the gentleman whose contract we signed to do these CDBGDR grants, that the council authorized this evening, was because I had a conversation with John Mandeville, Executive Director, because I knew he did economic development up in Lamoyale County. And I said, John, do you know anybody who has, you know, anybody who's good, who has the bandwidth to do some of these grants for the city? Because we don't have that bandwidth. And, uh, you know, so between Nicholas and I beating the bushes, uh, we came up with a great candidate. So Peter, that's something we think about and talk about every day. We are, as we, as we do these projects, we're, we're going to need human capital, we're going to need project managers. Uh, because there's no way, I asked Nicholas to do it all, he quit, and I don't want that.
I agree.
Yep, Amy?
Thanks. I wondered about, um, the vacant property list, um, could be commercial or particularly, um, multi or single-family housing that's vacant around the city. Um, I just have one particular one in, in mind in, in my neighborhood, and I don't know what's going on with it, but no one's lived there for probably five or six years, I think. And it's, it's kind of a shame because the, um, just inevitably, like, an unoccupied property tends to go downhill, right? So it's, it's assessment value is gonna go down over time. Um, and meantime, we have people who've been displaced from their homes, and maybe they'd like to still live, you know, um, not too far from the north end, or I'm kind of on the fringes of the north end, um, in Berry. So I'm kind of astounded that it hasn't been put on the market in this case, and I don't know if it's just that it's owned by some giant national mortgage company, and relative to them, they're just paying the, the taxes on it, and it's nothing to them, but like, if we could find a way to turn that into local housing, it could be so important for somebody locally, so. You know, I, I don't know what the mechanism is for doing that, or if this grant is relevant for that, but there are scattered houses here and there that are not in the flood plain that, um, you know, they're on a downward trajectory, I think, for the, their assessment value, if something doesn't change with them.
Yeah, I, thank you, I mean, I absolutely agree. I think probably everyone can name a house in their neighborhood that is being underutilized. And there are probably a huge variety of reasons for that. Um, we did put a focus on abandoned derelict structures into the Flood Resiliency Plan with the most recent update. When we were having our conversations this past, uh, winter about best use of downtown buildings, um, a constituent of mine who has a lot of expertise in planning and zoning, um, Ed Stanek reached out to me and had some really phenomenal ideas around that, and I connected him with Planning Commission, um, to start to find ordinance-based ways we can address that. And I, that is a conversation that I, with the passing and the update of the Flood Resiliency Plan, um, we will be focusing on at council going forward when we hear the updates on that and see how it's moving with Planning Commission. I don't think it's an ordinance-only solution. I think your idea of incentives, um, because it's, it's gonna be both, right? It's gonna be people who in bad faith are letting structures go. And then it's gonna be people in good faith want very badly to maintain their structures, and there's a barrier there. Uh, so the more thoughtful we are about, um, the paths to address those things and provide support for people for whom it is a good faith, something is going on there, um, and we can front and support someone. I think there's a ton of potential there.
Yep. Yeah, I, I absolutely agree. I, I think any reasonable person would. Uh, any other que, yes, oh, I'm sorry, didn't see your hand. This day is straight, not curved. You don't see anything, sorry about that.
Um, my question is to Counselor Guston. Would your top five projects change knowing that we did not get the bridge, the money for the bridges?
No, because I still hold out hope that the Hazard Mitigation Grant, there's something. I'm not sure what went on there. I think we have, have further conversations with that grant. With that granting agency, I think, and the other thing I will say is that we did also, the manager also put in applications for congressionally-directed spending for both of those bridges, and we will probably know in, uh, mid to late August, usually, is when we know whether or not that's been forwarded into the federal budget. So we will have a pretty good idea, either through further conversations with the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, because we're first in line for if there is more funding, or through the congressionally-directed spending. My answer may change by the time we have to submit final applications for this, if we're out of luck. But not right now.
Okay, thank you.
Amy, yes?
First of all, my deepest disappointment that we didn't get funded for hazard mitigation.
Don't get me started.
Okay, so, um, I would definitely.
Writing down what we're saying, or I would, anyway.
I would definitely put that at the top of the list because there isn't, there are gonna be more, more floods. We have to do something for the people that are still trying to live here, to encourage them to keep living here. So, um, I would like to expand the study for the downtown to include green flood mitigation measures, which will improve the overall look of the city. And I think they'd be less expensive than some other hazard mitigation measures. I think that the, um, they can, the city-owned property that's possibly, that could be possibly developed should be going up for sale for, especially for flood victims, and like, sell it for a dollar a lot, and see if we can get some housing moving along. And there's an economic development that's a very tiny part of this grant, correct?
Very small.
It's, yeah, it's, it's possible.
Yeah.
Never mind that. Um, and I, I agree that studying downtown development, and particularly going back to that U Penn study, which I thought was very impressive work. That would be, completely change the look of Berry, and I think it'd be very attractive. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, I, I do want to apply for, I mean, there is a very small amount of money to support economic development in communities. You know, we have been fortunate, we have, probably our, our two best partners are Barrier Development, or three really. Barrier Development Partnership, which, which is different than, they're more promotion than economic development. So even though I value the partnership, I would look, uh, to apply for something. I talked to the ADC. Uh, you know, they've been responsible for the three million dollar grant. If you look at how the city has benefited from that relationship, there's a lot of benefit to the city of Berry. So I'd look, even though the dollars are small, um, they leverage the dollars. And now that they've hired, uh, Josh Jerome, who is just a superstar and full of energy, and is, and you're gonna be hearing about him a lot, um, I would look to submit something to support Central Roman Economic Development Corporation and Barrier Development Corporation. So it wouldn't be big dollars, counsel, because it's not big dollars available for those types of organizations. Uh, but they would make my, you know, they would eventually make my list.
If I may, just sort of add to that, too, I think there's some interesting possibilities that we haven't yet really explored as a council to partner with other communities on grants. I know there have been some conversations about that at the Winuski River Flood Resiliency, did I get it? Yes, okay, oh, close enough. Um, at those conversations in the past, um, about what we may be asked as a city to sign on to large regional studies of river flow and things like that, um, that could benefit us. And I think in particular around economic development, um, CDEDC may be an interesting partner if there is some kind of uh, opportunity to partner with another municipality, um, on, uh, on something like that. I don't think there's anything really in the mix right now, but it's an interesting question.
Oh, yes.
So what if the grant doesn't come true for Prospect Heights?
What if it doesn't? I'll have another plan, I promise.
Okay.
Any other questions for Counselor Guston? Uh, you wanna put my list up? So, so Counselor, again, uh, thank you, because you're doing the work, and I respect and appreciate that. Um, so I had a list that, uh, that I put together. Obviously, I already talked about Prospect Heights. Um, you know, that would really be one of my top priorities. You talked a little bit about downtown development. I understand a little bit about that. I'm actually the only one who's actually building housing. A lot of people talk about it, I actually do it. Uh, we're building eight units of housing at seventy-five North Main Street. Um, there actually are project, uh, there are funds out there on a rolling basis for developers who want to develop upper floors of buildings. Uh, one of the best sources is the, uh, our downtown tax credit. So i- in the city of Berry, we have a designated downtown. Montpelier does. Not every community does, smaller communities generally don't. Um, but those are funds, millions of dollars in funds, tax credits, that are available on a rolling basis. So those, that money, do you have a question, Bern? Oh, okay. So those, those funds actually already exist. What, on my list, what made my list was one forty-three, solidly was one forty-three North Main Street. I have always believed that if you want to see an area, especially a downtown area thrive and see it be vibrant, put people there. Make, want, make people want to live there. When we hear stories about, I don't feel safe walking on Main Street, uh, put eighty or a hundred residents there at night, walking on Main Street with you, and I guarantee you, you'll feel safe. When you see our businesses struggling, put eighty or a hundred people living downtown, and I guarantee you, you, you'll do well. Um, you know, we have and continue to develop personally, um, those upper floors of buildings. I think those, I, I've never believed in dragging someone kicking and screaming. Um, you know, the projects where, that, the buildings that we own where it's appropriate to develop the upper floors, we just develop the upper floors. We use those state and federal tax credits, and we make it happen. But one opportunity, one thing I do believe in, is taking advantage of, advantage of opportunities. And right now, at one forty-three North Main Street, we have an incredible opportunity. We've been looking at the new Berry's building for, I don't know how many decades now, uh, because of the hard work of BADC. Um, you know, that, instead of looking like the acquisition looking like a pipe dream, it's looking more and more like a reality. Steve, you're within hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty thousand of making that happen. And where did you start? Zero, needing eight hundred, needing a million dollars at the time. So, you know, I, I think you're gonna be successful. So the big question in my mind is, all right, when they are successful, what happens next? Then I think we do need to provide an incentive to, uh, a developer to build a real building there, to build a, a sixty-four unit building, which, you know, isn't insurmountable. Uh, it would cost about twenty-five million dollars, give or take, maybe a little more, uh, to build the sixty-four unit building. So rather than use the money to incentivize developers in our downtown to develop upper, upper floors, I'd rather make something big happen. I'd rather work with the developer and say, look, we have a four-point-six million dollar grant that we can provide if you'll spend an additional twenty or twenty-one million dollars. So that would definitely make my list. That, so that was that. Did you have a question, Bern?
Okay, I'm gonna look right at you because I don't want you to miss, I don't want you to mistake what I'm saying. It's not a criticism, I just want a clarification.
Sure.
And it's not coming from a mean place.
I don't know that you have a mean place, Bern, do you?
Not really.
Okay, good.
Um, I, I get a little confused. I know that you do this for your part-time job. That's what you said tonight.
Actually, it's a full-time job. I just have enough energy for two people.
Well, I, yeah, so that being, uh, set aside.
Would I benefit from these funds?
No, that's not what I want to ask you.
Well, that's what everybody asks.
Well, I'm not asking that.
It's okay.
Um, I am a little confused about your language, and so I'm not clear, because you were saying, I am doing this. I'm developing this, we are doing. So I'm not sure what part of you is saying you, Tom, is doing this as a personal thing, it's your business and what you're investing in. Or what are we doing as a city? And so I, I just was feeling like. Or what are we doing as a city? And so I, I just was feeling like, I don't know, is he talking about this part for the city? Or is this something he's doing because he thinks it's a, he's doing it for himself?
Referring to specifically is a building that the, used to be Ormsby's TV and Appliances.
Right.
And then the Salvation Army built it, bought it, and they were going to put $2 million into the building. Then it flooded. So then they didn't put $2 million into the building. Karen, Karen and I, along with Trim Schwinnard, well, we, Karen and I bought the building. We're, we're sort of the developers behind it. We, Trim Schwinnard and his wife Lauren own 50% of that project with us because at this stage in my life, I'm always smart enough to have an exit strategy. You know, I got a limited shelf life, Rose. I'm, I'm playing.
Me too.
Bern, I, I'm playing the back nine, okay? So I've always got to have kind of an exit strategy. But no, all of the development that I referred to is, is private, is something that Karen and I are doing with our partners Lynn.
Okay.
Trim and Lauren Schwinnard.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure if it was how, you know, because I know you've done some other projects within for the city and some for yourself. So.
Never done one for the city.
What's, well, maybe, you know, a city place. I know you talk about it as we, or.
Worked hard to get that developed.
And so I never, I don't know.
Successful, but know that we did not have a, we did not have a personal ownership interest, Karen and I.
So just going forward, maybe when you're, if you're addressing that, just for clarity is to say, in my personal life, I have this experience doing this, but the city is working on this and that's what we're doing, just so it's clear.
I'll let people know I only play a mayor on TV.
Okay.
You've got it.
And we've got one right there. We keep you on task.
There you go.
Thanks very much for that clarification and for accepting my question with grace.
Of course. Look, I'm a pretty chill guy. I don't know what you've heard. I don't know what you've heard. So, so the one thing, so moving, sorry, were there any other questions on that?
May I ask a brief question on the 143 North Main? Does your estimate here include demolition and brown field remediation?
Yep. Yeah. I mean, the fortunate thing is I actually have a cost estimating software, so I got a little edge on you, but I'll let you borrow it anytime.
Yeah, please do.
So, yes.
So is there any concern with the fact that with the 143 North Main Street project, we have, as you clearly stated earlier in the meeting, we have absolutely no skin in the game right now. We don't have a contract. This is not our, this is not our building. This is not our, we're not purchasing it. There's nothing in writing to say that we could go forward with this project.
Well, there actually is.
Nothing in writing?
Called minutes, called minutes of the council meeting, county, city council made it very clear and Barrier Development accepted that when they acquire the property, the city, the $400,000 that the city is providing is contingent upon them dealing the property to the city of Berry. We do have site control.
I can, Mayor, if I can add.
Yeah, of course.
I've been talking to Josh Jerome about this. And as it's become clear that we're, that the ADC is closer to reaching its goal, we've begun engaging on a sponsorship MOU, I forget the exact terminology we use, but a, an MOU with, with the ADC that will be coming to the council at the August 5th meeting.
Yeah, Steve Mackenzie, yes. I actually, I'm working on drafting that now. I'm going to review it with the executive committee of the ADC. I would expect to have that presented to you. My goal is by, at least by next Wednesday, so you'll have adequate time to review it and put it on the agenda for the fall.
Yeah, and, and that was part of when, when the council did discuss this, that was, that was something that we talked about.
Mayor was very clear when the, when the motion was made that it was.
Subject of sponsorship agreement.
I'm going to call it a partnership agreement because I, I think it's a better name, but whatever we want to call it.
So that's, that's something that we, we began engaging on as it became, you know, we, we weren't going to engage on it when the ADC had, had raised only our money. But as, as the, the goal changed in terms of the amount of money needing to be raised, and as they've gotten within $120,000 of reaching that goal where it becomes more realistic, we've, we, we've spoken for the last couple of weeks on, on getting that done and getting it to you on August.
So I, Steve, I think you will. So, you know, to answer your question, councillor, more thoroughly, by the time this grant is submitted and certainly by the time it is awarded, the city will either have site control or we will withdraw the grant. My prediction is that they will be successful. We will have site control, and that's why I'm putting this forward to the council. So moving along, the only other thing I didn't see, councillor Guston, on your list was the North End. A real, a, a real pitch for the North End and for the people who live here and a real pitch to recover from, you know, just the devastation that, that has occurred here in the North End. I mean, it's really, you know, downtown got hammered, Courier Park got hammered. If you, but if you look at most areas of the city, and I say most, I know there are some people who are still struggling to recover. But if you look around the city, in most areas of the city, people have recovered. That is not true. That statement is not true when you go in the North End. They have not recovered. So I really place on my list, councillors, I placed a big emphasis on the North End. I duplicated, you know, we, we had a conversation. We can follow up because I sent you some, some of my notes. Maybe you agree with them, maybe you don't. But, you know, we had a conversation here last evening about the future of the North End, and about 90% of the people who were here said, well, no, we understand that we need housing. We love the North End neighborhood. We, we, we really want to maintain that neighborhood feel as much as we can. But we also understand that something's got to give if we're going to develop more housing. We can't make more land in the North End. So when I ask people, how many people would have a, a strong objection to the development of a larger building, a 64 unit building high-rise, not like the 10-story high-rise next door? Only 10% of the people said, no, I have an objection to that. So what I did is I took that 143 North Main Street number and just rolled, basically said, okay, build that same building in the North End and build 64 units of mixed housing, workforce, senior and subsidized housing in the North End. Money to develop a childcare facility because we heard about childcare and how people were struggling with that. An incentive to develop a 3,000 square foot grocery store. I don't know that the prices would be any cheaper, but at least folks who want, you know, altered it and want access to healthier foods in the North End, we could provide an incentive to someone to open a, a market, you know, similar to, think of AR market on steroids. We'd also develop, and we talked about flood retention, green space, recreation and walking path, all combined into one, sort of a long 302. This was pursuant to the governor's plan and the governor's plan that he presented to the council quite some time ago. The governor had a number of homes along Route 302 being purchased, raised and provide this big, you know, 30, 50 foot wide buffer with a walking path and a sculpture gardens and recreation fields, sort of a long 302 to buffer their neighborhood from Route 302. Again, when I talk to people and ask people, well, who likes that idea about a, in one resident stressed safe? I, I want a safe place to, I'd love a safe green space to walk in. And she stressed that. So I put that on my list. And again, just used, used a lot of Google Maps and per square foot numbers in terms of construction costs. But Wabi Park in there, again, as I told the council when I sent this to you, my list isn't, it's not to be an either or, it's not, it's, this isn't a competition. You'll see some duplicative things on my list and on councillor Guston's, and you'll see some things on my list that may not necessarily be on hers. So I did like the idea of the Wabi Park housing development. I reduced it by 640,000 because I costed out the, to, to put the alternate access to the public safety building. I think that's important. I'd love to see at the Air Property, which is part of our buyouts. I would love to see river access. People have talked about that. And again, when we talked, met last night and I asked people, how do you feel about this? They liked it. So I'd love to see some sort of river access, maybe a pump park, pump park being, you know, mountain biking, some kind of a pump park and, you know, maybe relocate the North Berry Rink so that it's closer to the neighborhood. Right now, you got to go down, cross the Willie Street Bridge. It's not in a real attractive area. Nicholas immediately pointed out, hey, I bet if we move the North Berry Rink, I bet Swenson Grant might want to find the land. So always looking for opportunities, Nicholas. Thanks for that. And then lastly, you know, we'll, I'll call it selective riverbed sediment removal. Some people call it dredging. But I think we have to get serious about our floodwater, especially on the North End. And again, it's not meant to be a competition. But our floodwater mitigation projects that affects, let's say, from Route 62 down, I realize everything affects everything. But if we could concentrate on those projects and those areas where we're affecting buyouts and concentrate, say, Route 62 down and have it include some selective and aggressive sediment removal. I mean, it's there. It wasn't there. I've lived in this city for 30 years. I know the areas that have filled in a little bit and the areas that people insist they filled in and they really haven't. But I'd like to make, make that a part, make aggressive floodwater mitigation a part of the North End project as well. And then lastly, totally in agreement on the storm water. I don't know how we pull it off, councillor. I think it's a great idea. I, I, like you, I've just, I kind of was thinking, I'm getting there, but I was kind of thinking of how we could present it so it would be successful. And, and, and I'm kind of in agreement with you that we have so many potential flood mitigation projects. I don't think it would be unreasonable to say, look, we're trying to prioritize stuff ourselves as we recover. And if we're going, so for example, if we're going to ask for a $15 million investment in the North End of town, we may have to prioritize, prioritize flood mitigation on the North End of town. But we won't know that for a year until we get the results of our study. And I don't think anyone else, I think this council has done a great job in term, you know, that's one of the first things we did was say, well, let's commission a study so that we can understand how water moves through our city. Let's commission a study so we can understand just how badly our storm system has been compromised. I mean, I think we're, I'm not even aware of anyone else who's doing that work. So I got to believe that everybody else who's going to be competing for these funds, these are limited to Washington County, they got to be in the same boat. So I think we can make a competitive case. So that's my, yes, sir.
I have a question and depending on the answer, just a follow-up. I, I don't see anything here about flood, letting the river, having a flood zone. I'm not a flood zone.
Yep.
What's it called?
Yeah, that's actually the.
Flood plane, yeah. Having, is, is that, you're talking about the, the area along 302 being a flood plane?
Yeah, along 302. So think of it as, when it was presented by the governor, think of it as a concave area where, but you're walking in it. I mean, you know, the roadway is actually six or eight feet above.
During a flood, that would be flooded?
Yes.
Okay, so I think it's a great idea. And of course, we've been talking a lot about that in Montpelier as well. The Farmway area. One of the really good arguments when you're going for grants is that if you can develop enough of a flood plane, that will mean a number of buildings which have been in the flood zone will probably no longer be in a flood zone, provided we can get the Army Corps of Engineers or whoever makes that, those.
FEMA.
FEMA. I mean, I, I own a property on, on College Street. We were barely flooded, but we're in a flood zone. And if, but if, if, if this were to change the, 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 the river, I think there would be a bunch of buildings in the North End and, and, and downtown that would be safe. So you're, you see, you're doing two things. You're actually improving the, the housing by having them not be, because once, once you're in the flood zone, FEMA tells you, you have to do this, you have to do that. And things which are way too expensive for anybody to do. You have to raise it or you have to bring up all your utilities. And, and, and this would mean you would not have to do that. And so there'd be a lot more buildings that would be livable. And then, then you can get some of those larger buildings to be broken up into apartments and, and increase the number of units. So I think it's a great idea, but I, it's not, I think you should put it on the list as a flood plane. I didn't see the word flood plane.
Yeah, well, they do. Even when you look at, on my list is, you know, an acre and a half of recreation area, the first thing we would do in that recreation area is lower. So that, you know, I mean, look, we all love North Berry Rink, but if it floods, we'll clean it up. It's a rink. You know, it's flooded before and we cleaned it up. You know, playground equipment, you, you clean it up. There wouldn't be any structures there. So yes, part of that, anytime you see that those recreation areas, walking paths, they double as floodwater retention areas. Yes, councillor.
If I may just add, we are aggressively pursuing floodplain in a couple of other areas in the city through targeted buyouts that we, we've talked about at council before. I think that at least my approach to the hazard mitigation grant idea list has been that we are not at like max capacity for floodplain development, but that we've done substantial amounts of buyouts and floodplain planning. Our hazard mitigation project, both, all three of those grants included additional floodplain. So I put some floodplain in my area over by Courier Park, which is a sort of different area than we've been talking about. But I think we're, we're putting together a lot of floodplain through other initiatives, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I'm.
Yeah, I was just saying that in terms of arguing for doing things in the North End, the floodplain aspect of it is a very important argument for it. And, and, you know, you're going to get a bunch more pushback about safety. And as soon as you start talking about parks, people go, oh, parks, that's where people are going to be camping. That's where people are going to be dealing drugs. So you really need to get, I think, the police chief to come in and say, you know, we're not worried about that. That, this would make, would make our, our law enforcement actually easier because it would, wouldn't be all over town. Or, I mean, that, people are going to be, the word park, people will react to it and say, that's going to be a problem, which I don't think it needs to be.
No, I would agree. Hi, Amy.
Hi.
Amy?
Um, you know, one thing I wonder about with that, that list of projects just now, and it may have been on councillor Guston's as well, is thinking about parking. And parking can serve multiple functions. You know, I love Merchant's Row being paved compared to how it was before, but it's also like, oh, that's all sending all the water right to our storm system and to the river. So, you know, if we can dream big about what goes in at Air Auto and, you know, that area of the North End, what can we do about, not just lowering things? Because that's really, I mean, that's one way to do it. But if the surface is still hard, it's still going to get to the river fast. And really what we've seen, and you guys have often talked about how critical timing is, right? Like, when does the rain come and how fast does it get to the river? And how quickly does it drain through? And part of that is infiltration into the ground. So you're trying to turn the surface water into groundwater. And eventually it will make its way to the Stevens branch, but you want that time lag. You know, and you want the storm the day before to be making its way slowly to the river and that sort of thing. So, you know, like University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center has a ton of stuff about pervious pavement. So different things you can do with where it's either, you know, you may have seen where it's kind of like concrete blocks and grass can grow through it, but it, it helps have infiltration, but you can still also have it for parking. So and, and people can still walk on that kind of thing. So I think, you know, as those plans develop, if you can think about ways to have parking serve multiple purposes. I would love to have a grocery store in the North End that I can walk to. That would be great. But you're also going to have people going with cars, right? Because there's a limit on kind of how much people can carry with groceries maybe, and that would be a great business opportunity. But like, what are you going to do about parking with that? And, and maybe you don't need, you know, 24/7 parking, but you need parking some of the time. So I would think about parking and how that can be infiltration. And you could even go wilder on thinking about things with actual storm water, like detention and, you know, some places, I think you guys have talked about this before, some places will build vaults that can temporarily hold water under structure. So if you're really digging up the ground, you know, what can you do to hold water as long as you can and release it later when, when the floodwaters have already gone down? And I, I think with all of that too, if you can be strategic about what triggers state stormwater permitting requirements or, you know, things with Lake Champlain Tandil and all that kind of thing, like the more you can control the sediment and the runoff there, that may benefit the city because you do have to watch out. The stormwater permits keep getting stricter and stricter, depending on how much. Um because you do have to watch out, the stormwater permits keep getting stricter and stricter, um depending on how much hardscape um you create.
I agree, all all good ideas, the um, so when I think about the reason I put specifically a three thousand square foot grocery store. When I think of the ideal grocery store, I think of Quality Market. You you know, and the young lady who, and that's her business model, she loves that model, the smaller grocery store. She owns one in Granaville, does Quality Market, and I look at Quality Market and. I love that store, I mean, I can get everything that we need. Um they don't have blue ketchup, um they only have red ketchup. Uh and that's fine, I think blue ketchup is silly, but you know, my point is that a small store like that. Would require, and I do like the idea of the impervious site type pavement, which you can get. Uh you know, you can get anything, anything you want in a three thousand square foot grocery store. So that would be my vision, not necessarily like a a a larger, you know, supermarket with a hundred and twenty parking spaces. But I think those are, those are all great ideas and good observations, Amy, thank you.
Yeah, I love Quality Market too, and it makes me mad anytime people say we don't have a grocery store in Berry, cause we do, and I drive there sometimes. It's nice, cause you can go in there and get stuff and get out quickly and and it's local.
Exactly, yes, councillor.
Um, just a quick question on the, if if I may, on the um, the north end development, the. Air property um development. Um, I just sort of like two just out loud thinking questions. One is that um the conversion of that space into a lowered floodplain. I believe is already part of the Willie Street Bridge Hazard Negation Grant Project application. So we may be part of the, we're with funding on that one already, depending on how we sort that out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I would be curi- I mean, I, not that the race water plant isn't great ambiance. For the North Berry Rink, I'm genuinely kinda fond of it, it feels, you know, whatever. But um I would, I think the relocating, that could be really cool. I just would worry about that uh permanent structure restriction on the green space, on a buyout space.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure if they would consider that, so if you removed, if you had some of the, some of the boards. So they would break away, they would break away in in a flood.
Yeah.
Um but I don't know if structurally that would work, I mean, it's it's a question I have to ask. Admittedly, I thought of it, and I'm like, okay, would they, would they consider it sort of a building that would retain water? And then break away and, or would you have to build it differently? And you can't build hockey boards with an open, it 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 sort of defeats, it defeats the whole purpose.
Doesn't work.
So that that absolutely is a question I have to ask, and North Berry Rink may have to stay right where it is. I was thinking more in terms of the neighborhood and our conversation last night, what people were saying about.
Yeah.
You know, I I wanna see people out walking in the neighborhood, I wanna see people, you know, the comment about the park. Well, Courier Park is fine, you know why? Cause that neighborhood owns it, go try to do something in Courier Park, you won't get very far. And then, but unfortunately, there are parks in the city where there aren't always residents who are watching, so on occasion, bad things happen. But not, but not when good things are happening in a neighborhood, because the neighborhood won't put up with it, and they look out for each other, so. But all good observations, yes, councillor.
So as far as the skating rink, um when I lived in the north end when I was eight or nine years old. I played hockey, yes, but the city would flood the parking lot where the little pool was. So I guess what I'm saying is you don't need boards, cause you're not gonna play hockey there, it's for skating.
Right.
So that would prevent all the structural debris, so you wouldn't really even need that.
That's actually a great idea, so you know, the point is, there's a lot, we, there's a lot we can do with land when we lower it. There still is a lot that can be done, so there's a lot of possibilities, so. Councillor, any, anything else that someone, I mean, pretty, pretty exhaustive list between councillor Guston and I, there is no more money left. We took it all.
I mean, I would, I would be interested in hearing other ideas from other councillors, but I have some sort of just big picture strategic questions for council about how we do this. I wanna leave space for anyone else to pitch ideas before I jump into that.
Jump in.
All right, I'm doing it, um, okay, and some of this may be a conversation with uh. With ACCD and 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 what is our best strategy for funding, right? Because I think we could, we could go two different paths here. Um, our lists overlapped in a lot of places, we just packaged them differently.
Right.
So is the better strategy to package a large fifteen to twenty million dollars? That includes all these pieces and make a really appealing big package? Or is it to break them up into smaller bites so that we theoretically raise our likelihood of getting pieces of them? So that's one thing I've been turning over my mind, and the other thing is that I would strongly advocate for us submitting. You know, we've been talking sixty-eight million overall, fifty-five million going to Washington County. I would strongly advocate for Barry submitting at least fifty million dollars worth of projects. Because we want them all, but we're not gonna get them all, but the more we submit, the sort of flood the zone grant strategy. I guess, not to realizing that was a bad metaphor now that I said it out loud. Um but the more projects we submit, the more chances we have um to get them through. So I, and we're not gonna get fifty million, I mean, I'd love to get fifty million dollars, but I would like to submit for fifty million dollars. On the chance that we get thirty of them and we just won't know, I I would hate to submit exactly thirty million and hope we get all of them. Am I making, like, okay.
No, I'm 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 thinking we submit, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have bandwidth capacity issues. Uh I'm I'm hoping we don't, I mean, listen, I'll help out with some of the grants as best I can. Um you know, it is gonna be a uh an all hands on deck moment, um so I'll certainly help. Um, no, I mean, because I, I think we have to get, I mean, there's no fluff in your list. And there's no fluff in my list, there's probably things we left out.
Yeah.
We could probably submit a, when we, if we really go citywide and and just really went crazy. We could probably have a seventy-five million dollar list, and I think the more we can put on a list, I think it demonstrates the need. You know, what I want them to take away is, look, this is not a city that's done. Even if we, even if we give them thirty-five million dollars, holy cow, we're only covering fifty percent of their legitimate need, and that's an accurate statement. So um like I said, I mean, we have to prioritize in case we end up with bandwidth issues. We may have to prioritize because this is sort of a new process, so. It's, it's not outside the realm of possibilities that ACCD could say to Barry. Um, okay, Barry, we're gonna award thirty-two million dollars, what do you want? And tell us why, you know, you gave us a fifty-three million dollar list. Now convince us, show us how thirty-two million goes together in your community and best benefits your community. So I think the more ready we are, uh the more items on the list, I think, I think the better off we're going to be, yes, councillor.
Can we just talk about timeline, um and specifically, um because we're having this discussion. Um and you know, there are probably people in the community who would wanna weigh in or might have really great thoughts. And so how can we make sure that we are um providing an opportunity for people to come and. Either touch base with us individually or come to city council or send us an email, whatever.
You mean like tonight? When we put it on the agenda and said, come on in and talk to us?
Well, I, well, I think, well, what I'm saying is, I'm not sure that if I was looking at this agenda, I would know what a CDV G D R project is. And what that is, what that means, I'm sure that Mr. Delcor is gonna write about it and then more people will know about it. But I'm just wondering if we could find a way to make sure that we are opening up the conversation. We had the conversation last night about specifically about the north end, but um I wanna make sure that, as you said, that we're. Um, taking into account that there are other parks of the city that may also have some ideas about how we might spend this money to. Um worry about to to address housing, to address infrastructure, to address flood mitigation. So I I just, I don't, I know we know what that means, but I don't think most people know what that means.
Well, we can have more meetings, I mean, it's as simple as that, um you know, we, you know, we post agendas. Um boy, we've talked a lot about community development block grant, disaster recovery funds. It's just easier to say CDBGDR, and I'm actually getting it saying quickly, which.
Is it easier?
Took a while, didn't it? But you get good at it, uh so you know, my suggestion would be more meetings, you know, sorry, but.
I find it more, but I just, I'm just asking, how can we involve?
Yeah, I mean, there's no substitute for hard work.
If I may just provide a quick data point, um which is that the pre-application, which is not required, but is suggested. Um is that process is opening in early August, and then the actual applications are gonna be, they haven't set a date yet. But I'm gonna guess like September, so we do have time before we finalize. Um I would love for us to get to a a handful of pre-application um preparation tonight. But we will have plenty of time for people to weigh in.
Yes.
Um, this is, I, you know, I've been thinking about the parking issue, because yes, the permile parking is one thing that might work. Um and and I don't know whether this would fit into the um the community block grant strategy or not. But I know there are some places that have done covered parking, where either it's a a green roof over the. Um over parking spaces that absorbs water and has a drainage into a cistern. Um and a couple of places have done that with solar panels so that they make electricity. Um and then, you know, so I'm, you know, I'm thinking in the, can we include some of that in some of these? Maybe in some of that parking for the housing and use the electricity that's generated. To help make it more affordable for people.
You could, it it it's not a bad idea, when I think about, um you know, for example, in the downtown, when I think about. Um, one forty-three North Main Street, that site is sixteen thousand square feet, that's how big it is. Um so what do you do with the first floor? Um it's going to have to be elevated to a certain extent. No developer in their wildest dreams in this environment would build sixteen thousand square feet of retail space. What would actually make more sense is to have about, cause it's a fifty foot width. Is to have about three thousand square foot of retail space, and then in back of it where you don't see, so you put the retail space in front. And then you actually have ground level parking, what we would consider under the building. So you're, you you, because we can't have, you know, we don't really want residential units on the first floor, we want them on the upper floors. We want the first floor for retail, but right now, parking is better used. So that's what I always think of, I always think, whenever I think of surface parking, I think put a building on top of it. If solar, I think, is an interesting strategy.
I mean, you can put it on the roof of the building too.
And I I honestly don't know enough about the impervious um blacktop. I I don't know a lot about it, and what I don't know about it is I haven't really looked at where it's been used in Vermont and how durable it is. Gravel would be the best way to go, just don't pave the lawn, cheap gravel, what happens when you gravel it? Snowplow comes along, half the gravel's gone, and it ends up in your roadway.
Or it washes out.
So, but but in terms of being impervious and actually absorbing into the ground, gravel is the best way to go. You know, don't even pave it at all, but we can't do that in Vermont where we park, yes, but I think, no, they're all, they're all good ideas and we could incorporate them all.
Yeah, this is a little bit of an aside to the broader conversations, but um pervious uh structures. My mother is very slowly moving to Maine, I visited her a couple of weeks ago. Um and I'm gonna look into the zoning for the uh neighborhood of the town where she's lived. Because everyone there, and this is Maine, right, they get snow, they get the same winter conditions we do. Um is now doing, it's right on a coast, and they're now doing um pavers with grass between them for all of their driveways. Um and that was something she did at her house many years ago, um but now everyone's doing it. So I think that there has been, I haven't had time to look at this yet, I'm gonna call up their planning department and say, so what was this like ordinance change? Was this just a really interesting trend, what's going on there, but they're holding up shockingly well. So I think that there are some really interesting, they're like these like diamond pavers that the grass grows up and it holds it in place. So unlike a a snowplow, the snowplow just takes it like regular driveway. Anyway, that is a total aside, but it's something I'm gonna be chasing in the next couple of weeks, cause I'm tense and curious how it's working.
Yeah, they're all, like I said, the, you know, the ideas are really, uh when I hear about impervious pavement. Like I said, I I think, you know, that's, anytime you can keep groundwater out of our storm system, that's a beautiful thing. So even with solar, I think of solar to say, okay, that's interesting, but how could we, you know, obviously, you got a canopy over it now. So the water's gotta go somewhere, it's gonna sheet and go somewhere, how do you direct that so it doesn't end up in the storm system?
Gutters and a a cistern, um.
Yeah.
You know, a cistern.
So anywhere we can do that to encourage people from.
Yeah, and that, like, you could, you could do that on Merchant's Row and have it, you know, have the, you know, the, the space that's between the. To fly.
Mm-hmm.
The parking, have that be dug out to be um cistern and have the um the gutters feed into that.
So those are all things we need to think about, yes, sir.
I just wanna follow up on with councillor, um.
Ruth here.
Said, sorry. Uh, I don't think saying CBGG blah 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 cuts it. I think if you want the community to be here, you need to do something which we didn't, we, one thing we did in Montpelier that was great. We had a country club road, um. Like four sessions in a row to bring in the community, to talk about what they would like to see, what they didn't wanna see and so forth. There were probably more than a hundred people who came to every one of those sessions. And uh you do, I I'm I'm sitting here with all these initials. And I gotta tell you, the first time I heard all these initials at a city council meeting at um in Montpelier, six years ago. I said, you guys have to stop with the initials, you know what they mean, but most of the rest of us don't. S- saying the words is is the way you communicate with your constituents. So I, I agree with councillor Spalding, even though I forgot her name. And I really don't bother saying, you know what that sounds like to me? Sounds like CBGBs, which was a club in New York.
Well, I I don't entirely disagree, but I also have always felt that people need to be engaged. And you know, we've had enough talk about these funds and saying community development block grant dash disaster recovery. Every time just kinda gets me, but uh we had a great, uh to that end, we had a great meeting last night about the north end. Um, we had how many people? Yeah, I mean, we had quite a few people here, and they were engaged and offered some really constructive feedback.
They came because the word north end was in it.
Right.
Uh so what I'm suggesting is, you can do, you have to put a good name on it. Not just, you know, it's 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 a meeting, the city council's gonna talk about the future.
Right.
Talk some good names.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you. Okay, councillor, we will, Amy, did you have something you wanted to add?
Oh, all I was gonna say is, the reason I brought up the University of New Hampshire Stormwater Site is because it is testing for our climate. Um so they literally have like experimental parking lots where they try different things and compare them, and so they do test it for working in a cold climate. Um and I can't remember if University of Maine has a stormwater or a stormwater center too, but um if you search for UNH Stormwater Center. They have like all kinds of design guides and manuals and examples and that kinda thing, so it is possible, but you do have to take into account. Um you know, you can't just borrow models from down south, you have to look at our climate.
Thank you. Uh councillor, we'll move on to item nine, upcoming business with an, it's gonna.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Uh, did we want to move some with the knowledge of that pre-application deadline? Did we wanna move some into starting to work with our new grant writer?
Um, sure, I mean, we could, we could do that, I mean. I don't know that we have to have uh necessarily a vote motion on all of them. Uh prospect heights, I mean, you've heard everyone talking about it, uh about submitting that grant application. Making that a priority, is anyone opposed to us submitting, uh putting prospect heights on the list? And get going with it. All right, no one's opposed, that's what we'll do. You know, the north end, I mean, we could spend a long time on on this, I I, one way or the other, if I have to do the grant myself. One forty-three North Main Street is getting, i- is getting done, uh we'll see if the council wants to submit it. Uh, we'll see if the council wants to submit it. We'll see if there's four votes or not, but one way or the other, that one is getting done. I think that's a real opportunity. The North End Housing sixty-four unit, it's basically going to be a mirror image of the, you know, there it it's the same building with, well, I say the same building. Um, as I look at, you know, building plans and what you would put on North Main Street, you could put a virtually identical building, you know, in in terms of, you know, the width and the size of the lot, sixteen thousand square feet, which would, which doesn't even translate into, you know, a half an acre lot, um, not including some additional, you know, you'd need about an acre lot to do a sixteen thousand square foot footprint, five-story building. So as I, again, as I look at that, um, so I think my top three just sort of by definition, yes.
I would really like to see the downtown housing incentives that works on Counselor Guston's list included in the things that we're going to do.
I'm struggling with those only because I see it as duplicative because there are incentives there now. And think about the buildings where the upper floors are unoccupied and the upper floor, you know, just in your mind, close your eyes and take a walk down downtown and think about and look at the buildings that could be redeveloped on the upper floors. And then think about loans. I don't know that all the incentives in the world can incentivize some people. And like I said, we have incentives now for people. So when I when I think about the buildings that are developed.
What about exploring some incentives if we have these land, you know, these property owners who aren't ever going to do that? Um, exploring some incentives to um, you know, or maybe um, ordinances or changes to tax structure that might make different um, make them make a different calculus?
Well, we have a vacant building or, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing we can do. I mean, Newbury's is probably the poster child. If a building is not, a lot of people were saying, take it through eminent domain. Eminent domain is a myth. It doesn't exist. So just because someone doesn't keep their house or their building to your standards, doesn't mean you can come and grab it. It it just doesn't work that way. So as long as Newbury's was structurally sound, it wasn't going anywhere.
I realize that, but it, I mean, there are, there are municipalities that have set up tax structures that tax vacant buildings differently that or that, you know, they have, they have ordinances, vacant building ordinances that actually have, actually have teeth in and are enforceable. Um, I just wonder whether we shouldn't explore some of that.
And again, I wouldn't be opposed to the discussion, but I don't know how that would tie into community development block grants.
Okay, it may not, but I'm saying that 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 kind of in, I mean, very, I mean, that was workforce housing at one point. And that was why there were so many people downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that it would really help, I mean, it would really help if we brought some people, you know, we have, we would answer some housing issues. It would check a lot of boxes. If we could make it happen.
Hmm, yes.
So I just did some really quick and dirty math. And if we combine your list with my list and sort of like cross out the duplicative numbers, we get to forty-five million.
Yeah, and and I'd be fine with that. I mean, I don't have an objection to making everything, to saying yes to everything on this list and say, okay, you know, obviously, we'd have to cross out the stuff that's that's, you know, I mean, I've got five million for stormwater system maintenance and upgrade.
And I have that, yeah.
She's got, and Counselor Guston has the exact same thing. So, yeah, I mean, for me, it's not a dollar amount. It's about a
Yeah.
project and having the bandwidth. So I I have no objection to submitting everything on this list.
And I would be really curious, and maybe this is a conversation with our new grant writer and ACCD about that that question I had earlier of what makes more sense? Does it make sense to do a fifteen million dollar North End project? Or does it make sense to do three bites of big five million? I I don't, I don't know. I think there's a, so some strategy there.
And one question we haven't asked yet, I don't know who else. I mean, this is money that is not, that is open open to more organizations' adjustment as a balance.
Yes.
I don't know what other nonprofit or social service organizations are planning on doing. They could have another fifty million on their own. So I've been thinking about doing that. I'm probably going to have to go and just have a quick conversation with the major ones saying.
Say, if you're out there, call us.
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be nice if if they are, it would be really helpful to know so that we're not duplicating efforts. But um, I I was thinking about that today and I said, you know, I got to reach out to, you know, the obvious ones, the down streets, the capstones and, you know, reach out to them. I mean, one thing that I would love to see Capstone do, and you had this on your list with elevations, I'd like to go in a little bit different direction. Capstone has a great weatherization program. The recent federal bill pretty much decimated those funds. So I don't know that they'll have a great, there's still state funds available, but a lot of the federal funds aren't going to be there as with renewables and, you know, solar. And I I'd love to see an organization like Capstone saying, we're going to pivot a little bit because in as much as we always need weatherization, we need houselifting more. The 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 three hundred thousand dollar price, I keep saying this, I don't begrudge anyone making a profit, but the three hundred thousand dollars just, it seems so huge when you look at a house that is only worth two hundred thousand to start with. And now you're putting another three hundred thousand dollars back into it. So that's a total of five hundred thousand. It really makes you wonder, do you just tear it down and build somewhere else? It it's, so there's got to be a way, and I don't know if it's an economy of scale thing, if you literally had four crews for three years running around the North End. You've got a sixty-four unit building, so while their house is being worked on, people have a place to live. And you literally have four crews running around the North End lifting the homes up. And you'll get the economy of scale. I mean, it's it's why, it's why after the Second World War in the United States, they built thousands and thousands of home neighborhoods because there was economy of scale to doing it on the assembly line and just, you know, every home was the same. And we were just trying to build as many homes for as many returning GIs as we could, and it worked. And people still live in those homes today. So we got to figure out a way to do it. And no, I don't have a list. I don't have an objection to doing everything on the list. I'm more concerned about bandwidth and that's where we're going to be depending on um, Nicholas to to scream uncle when we put too much on him. So. Does that sound okay to Counsel? Anybody have an objection?
Oh, the dice.
Yeah. Who do you want to follow up with on the, the question about strategy? I don't know if they're going to give us a great answer on that.
I, yeah, I'm not sure they will either, but I think that, I think there are probably some conversations to be had at least. And then we'll have to decide. I don't, I don't, I'm really arguing it both ways in my head right now, to be honest. I mean, I'd hate to put something together for fifteen million that gets shot down when we could have gotten ten of it, you know, with two other grants.
Is there a way, is there a way to find out who, you know, what municipalities bought the grants the last time they gave these grants out, whatever that would be, and how their their strategy? That we could sort of learn from them?
I don't know that we, well, this is, this is a supplemental federal bill. I mean, even during my tenure in.
That's around the country, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying somewhere else that maybe a municipality applied what their strategy was and how that worked with them.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I'd have to, we'd have to do some research.
Yeah, I think um, that we we could look into it. I think the tricky part would be hard to know um, if applications weren't funded, what wasn't funded. I thi- I think the best place to probably start is with um ACCD and people who deal with um with their counterparts at the federal.
The other spot of weirdness here is that there's like big rules, right? And then the state makes its own rules too. So I, some of it might not, but not all of it.
Right.
But if it doesn't, it's not too late to change it.
Of state rules?
Yep, believe it or not.
It would be tight.
Oh, well. That's, that's.
Theoretically.
So upcoming business, Counsel, it's going to be uh, all grant applications all the time until they are, until we sign and submit the last one. And that's really where our focus is going to be. So roundtable.
Um, sure. Um, I'm working with um some folks at the Aldrich Library on um a landscaping project that's going to um utilize native, um, some Vermont native trees and shrubs and um will um involve removing the old new trees that are um difficult because they block light to the children's room and cause other um other issues that um that Aldrich wants to deal with. So that will be, you know, watch the space. Obviously, some interesting things happen.
Thank you, Counselor.
Um, pass.
Mr. Burge, you're on.
Just like to thank the book club for allowing us to use this great space.
His Majesty, Mr. Dent. The mayor, the mayor of the North End.
My only complaint is that there was no chicken and mustard choice. That's my complaint about the book. It's my favorite place to get that in all of Berry. Um, okay, so my um roundtable is that um the Aldrich is hosting a book club on Thursday at five thirty. Um, the book is Poverty by America and um I, even if you have a credit, turn us if you are able to. Thank you.
I want to thank Jeff for sponsoring me for the book club, although he hasn't known yet.
And likewise, Rick, sincerely, thank you very much. It wa- it was great to be here. Uh, I've, it it's a lot less great without polenta and sausage, so I guess I I I can, I can tell you that. Uh, Heritage Festival coming up. I hope all of you enjoy it. Um, there is a team event. Um, we actually could, the Berry City Council could pull a tractor if all of you are so inclined.
I'm not going to be here. I genuinely would love to do.
I'll send an email. And with that, Counsel, we don't need the executive session. So I would hesitate a motion to adjourn. Thank you. There's a second. All those in favor of the motion is presented. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned.